I'm calling to order the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission of Wednesday, January 13th. Before we begin our meeting tonight, I just want to take a moment and welcome our newest Planning Commissioner, Matthew Hudes, to our commission. We are really looking forward to working with you in this next year and many years to come.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thanks you, Chair Birch. Commissioner Kane?
Here.
Commissioner Erickson?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Badami?
Here.
And Chair Birch.
Here. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioner O'Donnell in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any written communications this evening, Mr. Paulson?
Yes, there is one desk item for item number five. You have that on the dais and there are copies out on the table in the lobby.
Have all my commissioners had a chance to read the desk item for this evening?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. I understand that item number three has been requested to be continued. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do we need to make a motion on that?
You do need to make a motion, although we're continuing to a date certain, so I would look to the town attorney to see if that's really necessary, but since it's on the agenda, I believe you do.
Are we continuing to a date certain or no? No, we're not. So there is no motion. It'll just be rescheduled by staff.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that item? Seeing none, all right. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of our commission serve on several town committees. We're taking care of it. We got it. Only we had a town attorney to take care of these kind of things, you know? They serve on various other committees and commissions. Do we have any reports to give this evening? Commissioner Badami?
Yes, the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee met earlier this afternoon. Myself, Commissioner O'Donnell, and Chair Birch met with the mayor and vice mayor, and we reviewed an application for emerging of four properties that are currently zoned office to demolish three single-family residences and to construct a new two-story office building approximately 32,000 square feet with subterranean or underground parking. So we got some comments from us.
I won't say a word.
And let me also tell you where it's at. It's at 1-5860, 1-5880, and 1-5894 Winchester Boulevard. We took a look at the architecture. It was somewhat modern, but we all looked upon it fairly favorably. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports to give this evening? Commissioner Hanson?
Charles and I were just debating who should say it, but the Plan Development Study Committee met on December 17th. We've been meeting twice a month to try and finish up the work, and the focus of the December 17th meeting was discussing conditional use permits. The committee was originally going to end at the end of December, but it's been extended to at least the end of January, so we'll be meeting again tomorrow and the 28th.
That's great. Thank you. All right. The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential for the Planning Commission to do their business on behalf of the town citizens and the town council. There are a couple ways for the members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. First, written comments about agenda items which are emailed and sent to the staff prior to our meetings are always very helpful. And second, at the meetings of the commission, there are another couple opportunities for members of the public to participate. During the verbal communications portions of the evening, you may speak on any topic which is not on the agenda, and during any agendaized item, a member of the public can come and speak about that item. If you do wish to speak, these cards are located in the seat backs in front of you. Please fill them out, and we will call on you when your item comes in front of us. At this moment, I do not see any cards for verbal communication, so I will assume that anyone that's going to speak is going to speak on an agendaized item. We're going to move on to items number one and two. These items have been placed on the consent calendar. Do I have any questions, comments, or would anyone like to make a motion on these items? Commissioner Erickson?
If there are no questions or no commissioners or no members of the public who would want to pull any of the consent items, I would move adoption of the consent calendar, which includes minutes from the December 2nd, December 9th meetings of the commission and a conditional use permit for a new fitness studio at the so-called Downing Center at the corner of Union and Los Gatos Almiron Road.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Hanson? Okay. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kane?
I joyfully watched all three hours of the special meeting, so I have read the minutes and I feel unable to vote on them. On a minor note, this particular item on Union Avenue and another item on Powell's Sweet Shop, if the establishment is closed, the lights are out, and the place is empty, and the doors are locked, and what's the point of an onsite? So if there is no point to an onsite, maybe they could tell us that the establishment's are closed, dark, and you can't get in, and there's nothing to look at. However, on the Union Avenue, I went around the back, and the electrical box is wide open. The other box had no lock on it, and the gates were unlocked. It looked like they should have been locked. I know that's not germane to the consent calendar, but I've just felt compelled to share my joy of going to places that were locked and dark, and that's my point.
I think that's why you wind up going is for that type of insight. So thank you, Commissioner Kane. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. So we're now going to open the public portion of the hearing this evening, and we are going to consider item number four, Town Code Amendment Application A-15-004, which is considering amendments to Section 29.10.020 of Chapter 29 zoning regulations. This is regarding the definition of formula retail business. We are being asked, my fellow Planning Commissioners, to forward a recommendation or comments or whatever to town council this evening. Ms. Renn, I understand that you're going to be giving us a staff report.
Yes, good evening. I'm Monica Renn. I'm the Economic Vitality Manager. On October 6th, actually, I'll back up. Starting in September, the council began a conversation about the provisions that we have for businesses to be permitted in town, and from that conversation, several items were identified that they wanted to take a look at. Formula retail was one of those items. So on October 6th, the council considered, one, do they still think that a formula retail restrictions are appropriate? And we heard from both sides on that, but they did come to the conclusion at that point that they did think it was appropriate, and staff recommended that if we do continue with the formula retail provisions, that were much clearer in what criteria, in the criteria that makes somebody formula versus an independent retailer. So currently, we define somebody with seven or more locations anywhere as a formula retail store. So if you have seven existing locations and you want to go downtown, you would require a conditional use permit. If you want to go outside of downtown and you're larger than 6,000 square feet, you would also require a conditional use permit. So the changes that are before you tonight for your discussion consideration and then recommendation back to the council would be, one, that we've changed that to look at just the United States. So there's been two instances in the recent past where we've had a business who wanted to open their flagship U.S. location in Los Gatos, but because it was a franchise or they didn't have the money, the CUP basically scared them away. The second was that we've added criteria that's pretty standard language used in several others jurisdictions that allows us to say what it is, the criteria that we're looking for. It's been pretty ambiguous in the past. We've had to just tell someone, hey, we looked on your website. Looks like you have seven, or whatever it is. So this just gives us the ability to provide a more clear explanation to the applicant. And that concludes my presentation. If you have questions, I'm here for you.
Does anyone have any questions of staff? Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Erickson?
I went back and looked at the council discussion, but I wondered, I had no problem with the definition and the proposed changes to the definition, but this is clearly part of a bigger picture thing where a lot of things are in play, and then the definition is just one thing. I wondered, just from looking at it, if there was any discussion about the actual number of locations being different for a formula retail. And what I'm bringing up is, and if it didn't come up for council or is an issue, then so be it, but it seemed to me that there's a huge, huge difference between a company that has seven locations in the United States or even in the state of California per se, for instance, Super Duper Burger, who is not downtown but over at Los Gatos Boulevard, and Apple or Starbucks or something that has thousands of locations. And so I just wondered if that number had been discussed. Is it the right number?
Thank you for that question. So two things. One, that I failed to mention in my intro, is that restaurants were also added to that definition, and thank you for that. It jogged my memory. But we did, we did do quite a bit, or the council did have quite a bit of discussion about the number. Seven seems to be the most restrictive number of any of the jurisdictions that we looked at. Some were a little bit harder to enforce. One jurisdiction locally said you couldn't have more than nine in the Bay Area, which then you would have to define Bay Area. Lots of places will say more like 13, 15, 20 in the United States. Staff had asked council if they wanted to make that change, to go higher, lower. They felt that seven was appropriate. We don't have any historical data on where that seven even came from when the original formula retail definition was put into play. So there definitely was that discussion, and nobody that I worked with through the benchmarking and nobody in the room at the time really had any magic number that they felt comfortable with outside of seven.
Okay. Well, so the follow-up question is, is the council intending to, it seemed like the answer is yes, but is the council then intending to put in some kind of metric for how many formula retailers we should have relative to other kinds of independent retailers downtown?
I don't believe so. That was not discussed. There was kind of this thought out there at some point that we had an 80/20 rule, and the reality is that 80/20 rule was never actually established. It was just kind of this idea that had been talked about. There's never been a limit to the number of formula retailers you can have versus the number of independent in downtown or anywhere, and I don't think that there is the intention to do that.
Well, and so then the actual definition of the formula retailer doesn't mean all that much because all we're doing is flagging them as a formula retailer, and then it kind of becomes to the deciding body to say it's too much or not, because we've seen a few of these, and then it's sort of like you know what the numbers are, how many of them there are, but since there's no guideline on how many there should be, it's sort of like all you can do is say that they are a formula retailer.
You're correct, and I think actually that's something that you all could consider tonight as a commission is, A, you know, would you recommend that we keep the formula retail back to the council, or B, if we do, would you recommend some sort of magic balance or some sort of limits on that? That's certainly something that you could add to your recommendation to them.
Okay. Well, that answers my questions. Thank you. Commissioner Erickson?
So thank you for the great work on this, as well as another item that we're going to talk about tonight. So I have a question about the addition of the United States, and I understand your answer to it, but I guess I always assumed that the reason for having, a primary reason for having this definition and then having some steps to go through if you had a formula retail was in part to protect the backside, to then ensure that we had independently owned, not always locally, but independently owned, which have a different nature and a different flavor than a quote "formula retail business." So if that's a primary reason for it, I guess it's not clear to me why it matters if the seven were in Canada as opposed to in the United States, and don't we leave ourselves open to, let's say that the seven exist internationally, if we then put a limitation in the United States, that we become the first, and a month later, there's one in San Mateo, and two months later, there's one, and you name the next places, and seven months later, it's effectively a formula retail because we just happened to be the first place in the United States that did it. So I'm not sure both, this is a two-part question. Why does it matter that they're outside of the United States if we're trying, if it's the flavor of a formula retail, and then do we leave ourselves vulnerable to have let someone appear not to be a formula retail when really we just happen to be the first place in the United States where they opened a shop?
I have, I guess, two thoughts for that. One is, I think, I think part of the intent of the formula retail policy was really to add interesting, different type of shops in a certain area so that you aren't a Valley Fair or a San Tannaro or something that we're used to seeing the same stores over and over. So hypothetically speaking, we could be their first U.S. store, or we could also be their sixth U.S. store, and they now go gangbusters, and there's 600 in the U.S., but as long as they were here first, whether they were in the U.S., whether they were in Canada or here, there's still the potential that they could become formula at some point, but we wouldn't make them go back through the process as long as the one that was here was within their first seven. Does that make sense? So even if they don't have a store in Canada, if they open their sixth here, and now they open them worldwide, they still potentially could become that large corporation.
Okay. Can I ask a follow-up question? So I don't think, so I understand that, but I don't think you really addressed the question of the flavor of an independently-owned business versus a formula retail and why it matters that the formula retail, the other formula retails are outside of the country because it would seem like to me, but still have the flavor. So I could have 100, I could hypothetically have 100 in Canada, and this would just be the 101st one.
I don't think there's a specific answer for that. I think it would be, you know, kind of also up to what somebody would see as the flavor. Does it bring something new to Los Gatos if the next nearest one is in Canada? I mean, I don't know. I think that would be completely subjective to whoever was, you know, thinking of it. I'm sorry. I wish I could give you a comment.
No, that's okay. No, that's fine. No apology needed. It was fine. That's a fine answer.
Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you, Ms. Renn, for the work on this, and I think that since this is not coupled with a ratio of formula retail stores, I think it's really important that we get this right. And so my question is, to what extent has the definition, the new definition, come from benchmarking, and where on the scale is, are we with all of these nine criteria?
So with the exception of the seven, that definition is pretty standard. There's at least three other jurisdictions in California, and I don't want to rattle those off off the top of my head because I wouldn't be exactly correct on them, but that's a pretty standard definition that's adopted for cities who use formula retail outside of the ones that had the one off of the Bay Area and things like that.
Commissioner Badami and then Commissioner O'Donnell.
Would that include the United States limitation as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a minor point, which I'd really like to address to the town attorney. On the draft, which is Exhibit 1, under the definition, in the first line where we say "formula retail business means a type of retail sales establishment or restaurant," which I understand. In the next line, however, when it says "which along with seven or more retail sales establishments," but doesn't say restaurant, I would suggest that it say "or restaurant." So that's really a huge comment I've got there.
So if we're going to pause for a moment with our questions with Ms. Renn and open this up
Thank you.
to public, we have one card, Larry Arzy. Mr. Arzy, you've got three minutes, and just make sure you pull that microphone close up to you and state your name for the record.
I wasn't going to talk very much, but a couple of things have come up. Thank you, Mr. Erickson, for bringing up what you have about the loophole, should we say, in this ordinance. Benefit when they came in is an international operation, and they don't have a CUP, to my knowledge. They just opened up and were given up. So we have, we have a big loophole where that's concerned. Also, to answer Monica's comments that where did formula retail number come from, or your comment about it, is we originally had the ordinance was any more than one store would require a CUP. I got up and fought for 12, and we compromised at seven. So now you know, Monica. Secondly, Monica brought up another comment that I don't understand where the CUP concept was brought into concurrence because we wanted interesting shops. Well, the CUP ordinance was not brought in to bring in interesting shops. It was brought in to keep them out. We did not want a chain, a supply of nationals coming into Los Gatos. To define formula retail is wonderful, but the loophole that allows new franchisees to avoid formula regulations only adds to the problem. If a franchise operation just starts and they intend on opening up 100 stores across the nation, and the first one's going to be Los Gatos, then they're a franchise organization. I mean, they should be a CUP requirement to get a CUP, or an ordinance to get a CUP. That's the biggest hole we have. That's what happened to the candy shop, which is on the agenda tonight, but that's not what I'm talking about. They opened up without a CUP because they were the second operation to open up, and they didn't have to have a CUP because of that. So if we can, if we can recommend to council to formulate some concept of how do you handle a new franchise, a new investment company with intention of opening up multi-chain stores across America, and the first one just happens to be Los Gatos, then we should designate this operation as a chain store operation. You don't, if you, if you make that announcement that franchises are available and for sale, then this is a franchise store, and that's a big loophole. I have only brought up two issues where that happened, but thank you for bringing that up, Joan.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you very much. All right. We're going to close the public portion of this item and ask if any of my fellow commissioners have questions of staff, comment, want to recommend. Commissioner Erickson?
So I have a question for, was probably for Mr. Schultz. So given Mr. Arzy's comments, is there a way that one could conceive of addressing, I'm not suggesting that we should, but let's assume for the moment that we had an interest in doing that. Is there a way to effectively write, write the ordinance that would allow for the potential of anticipated waste?
So not only during my research for this town, but I've done it for other cities and towns, I have not seen an ordinance that has tried to approach that, you know, just from a logistics standpoint of being able to get an applicant to admit that they are going to be franchising or know they're going to be franchising, and once you've given them that vested right, then you can't take that away. But it's something that if council thinks that, if Planning Commission thinks that's an issue, we could research it further. I haven't done the research on that specific issue. I'm just going by what I've seen in all the other jurisdictions on this issue. And there's, there's been quite a lot of case law on, on this issue, on whether they're, you know, I almost see at some point in time this legislation might, there might be legislation to prevent this from, these formula retail ordinances. A couple of them have gone so far as when you're having a formula, the main case is the Subway versus Arizona case where they tried to make certain that you could bring Subway in, but you had to change your sign. They didn't want the yellow signs, and they lost that case. So there are tremendous restrictions on what you can and can't do. I know this one's legal, but we can certainly look at that issue if it's something Planning Commission wants to.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Two points. One, Commissioner Erickson already made, and I agree with him. I don't think the international thing really applies, is if we're really concerned with is the somewhat cookie cutter store, whether they're in Europe or whether they're in Canada, they can still be a cookie cutter store. So I don't agree with saying the international doesn't count. It's only what's in the United States. Secondly, on the franchise, that Mr. Arzy makes the point, I agree with both of you. I think it's very difficult to enforce that, although at the end of his remarks, he talked about somebody having franchise information outs out. It would seem to me that if I'm the first store, but I'm going to be the franchise or, and I already have circulating that intention, I don't know what you'd do with that, because if I come into town and I want to sell widgets, and my long-term goal is to sell widgets all over the United States, that doesn't make me a chain store, and most widget stores haven't done well. But, you know, if in 10 years I've got 100 of those stores, so be it. But if you could come up with some way to show that a person was, that's what they were doing, but I'm not sure it's worth the effort. I would agree with him if there was some way to really know that, but I have a feeling we would just get sidelined, and the arguments legally would not be pleasant.
Certainly from the standpoint where you, what you explained with the widgets and you're opening your first one, I mean, there might be some mechanisms we can do where you've got the person, like you just mentioned, that maybe have three or four. They fall under the seven, but certainly if you do the research on them, you can see they want to grow to many, many more. So within a year or two, you're going to be over the seven. That might be something that we can, we can add additional language or look into.
The only problem I have is I don't think we want to say to our local businessmen, please don't grow. Please don't be successful, because if you do, we're going to have all these rules. I mean, I would love to see everybody in town be successful, and if they have their first store, and that's all they have really in Los Gatos, and then they're wildly successful, and they have 100 stores, God bless them.
Commissioner Hanson?
As I was listening to this, it occurred to me, since there, and I have a question, since there isn't any guideline or limit on how many formula retailers we can have in town, when it comes in as a CUP, couldn't, if the deciding body is part of their investigation, if they determine that this is going to be a thousand-location retailer, whereas they're only at 10 or five now, you know, couldn't that be a reason to say no, since there isn't any guideline saying that you can't say no? Okay.
Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner Kane?
So I want to follow up on the answer, the nodding of the head from Mr. Schultz. So given, okay, so assume that, assume what Commissioner Hanson just asked, on what basis would we be able to turn down or force them as a town to, essentially, we would force them to get a CUP, right? So the staff would have to have some basis or to then force them to have a CUP. On what basis would the staff have to do that, not just to let them go forward with it? On the speculation that they might have seven stores at some point in time, that's, I mean, I don't want to try to be the town attorney, but it seems like to me that's really
It'd be very difficult to write that language, Joel.
That would be challenging to
To know. And as Joel just pointed out, from a staff standpoint, if they don't meet that criteria right away, and that's what they put in their business license application, it just goes through a business license application and doesn't get that detailed review of us doing the research to see where they're at. So it does become very problematic.
Do you have a follow-up question or?
I have a different question.
Can we go to Mr. Kane and then back to you?
Sure.
Commissioner Kane?
I understand the intent of item one on the nine items in the staff report and in the proposed amendment to the Town Code, and if I do understand it, I'd suggest clarity for item number one. Standardized means both, identical and substantially the same. I think it would have more effect if my commissioners agree that it should simply say standardized means identical or substantially the same, instead of trying to meet two conditions to create more arguments. You say this condition or that condition, and boom. So I would take out the word "both," and I would substitute the word "and" for the word "or." Thank you. My second point was, on a probability standpoint, this may not be germane, but if there were seven Parisian dress shops, and they're going seven Parisian dress shops, and they're going to come to the United States, and they're thinking New York, Chicago, San Francisco, or Los Gatos, let me work on that. What's the probability of somebody targeting us for their invasion of the United States? I don't, it's possible, and I didn't think about what the commissioner said, I just don't think it's probable, but you must have put it in there for a reason.
So we did recently have one retailer who came from New Zealand. There were 100 locations in New Zealand. They wanted Los Gatos to be their first one. That was Blue Illusion. And they ended up opening up in Santana Row because the CUP process just took longer than it did in San Jose. And we heard quite a bit of feedback on that. And the way that they, this particular business runs their business is that whoever they select as their manager is, actually runs the store like the owner. So they choose the merchandise, they choose that stuff. So it's actually each store is unique. It's not a business model we see here very often, but it was definitely the opportunity to look at this whole conversation from a different lens.
I'm just thinking that if there is an organization that has seven locations somewhere in the globe, whatever they're selling is probably interesting if they want to bring it to Los Gatos. And I would want that to happen, I think. That's it.
Commissioner Erickson, did you have another question?
So there's a question for Ms. Renn. I can't imagine this, but I don't, I'm not as expert in this area as you are. Is there any way that we should think about this in relation to the shifting retail environment that is more online and so forth, so that, I mean, I may not, to go nationwide, I may be able to do that based in Los Gatos without opening franchises other places because I can do it online. So is there any relationship to think about this in relationship to that shifting environment? I don't know, but that's not my area of expertise. Yours?
You know, that's a really interesting conversation. That's actually where all of this kind of started from, is that we are seeing sales tax decline. How the sales tax works currently is if there's online shopping in this county, the money goes into a county pool, and we get a percentage, a very small percentage, based on, you know, our size. And there is legislation looking at actually sending the sales tax back to the zip code that it was purchased from, rather than going into this county pool, which I think would probably be quite a benefit for us, because we probably do have a fair amount of people who do online shopping. And I think not just online shopping, but delivery services, all of that. People don't leave their homes as often for retail goods, and I think that's also why we're seeing the shift in some of the vacancies and some of the smaller stores not being able to survive. So it's the question of creating a place where people want to come, that has shopping, that has dining, that has all of these things. And whether the formula piece plays a huge role in that, you know, I'm not sure. I'm not even sure if, I mean, I'm not, I don't know how it's going to line up, because things are progressing so quickly, and people are coming up with these concepts so quickly that, you know, you just don't know where retail's going to be a year from now. And I'm not sure how much this plays into that conversation.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I've been on this commission a long time now, and I remember when this started, and my recollection is, what we said was, we don't want downtown Los Gatos to look like every other shopping center around. So that's where it started. When, however, people came in like Apple, like Joseph Banks, well, in Joseph Banks, for example, we said, gee, there are no other men's stores in towns, basically. And we said, fine, that's okay. Apple came in and said, you've got two choices. You can either take us the way we are, or you don't get us. Because I remember people said, we don't like the front of your store. And they said, we don't care if you like it or not. Do you want Apple? So now, we're getting into this vacancy thing, and I think if somebody wants to explore the whole thing, are we worried about looking like Santana Row? Because if that's still the driving force, that's one thing. It isn't clear to me anymore, if we're worried about the change in retail and the effect of the Internet, whether we ought to revisit that whole thing. But I think we're kind of tweaking the bomb rather than diffusing the bomb. And so what we're doing tonight, I don't think gets to the real issue of what are we trying to accomplish? What we were trying to accomplish quite a while ago was in a better retail market, and we felt that we wanted Los Gatos to be unique, and I still feel that way. But as vacancies come up, it may require us to rethink, because I'd rather have stores in town than not, so.
Commissioner Kane?
Commissioner O'Donnell makes me think, it's not just Santana Row, it's not just Sunnyvale. What we're trying to do here is underscore create support vitality. And we have met the enemy, and he is us, because what you left out of it was the North Forty. And that makes me think now, if I can do anything for the CNB, CBN, Central Business District, that's what I would be doing, because we're going to have some challenges in the future to support Main Street, North Santa Cruz. So if this goes to that end, I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Suggest that we at least think about sending this back to the council with these questions?
Yes.
Because what we have before us, I think, again, you know, is fine, kind of fine, we could tweak it a little bit, but I think we're raising something that they're aware of, that we're not raising something they're not aware of. I just wonder if it's not the right time to address it. And perhaps we could be helpful to the council by saying, you know, let's not tweak this thing, let's really consider changing the whole ballpark. Now, we might say, but in the interim, here's how we feel about what's before us. For example, language changes, we've talked about, the international thing. I still, I still think whether there are 100 stores in Canada or 100 stores in the United States, they're a formula store. And the fact that we may say, well, golly, if they're in Canada, they ought to be able to come in, but if they happen to be, have 100 stores in the United States, they can't, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So maybe we want to just get to the exact thing that's before us, or maybe we want to say, a decision is premature. Could we consider the issue? Now, knowing that, and knowing how long it took us before, just to come up with the initial option, or the initial ordinance, you know, it may be the council says, let's get something done now, and now we'll investigate it. I don't know. But I tend to think, having heard tonight's conversation, that it's a much bigger issue than the narrow matter before us.
All right, so if I can pose a question quickly to my fellow commissioners. I think that's a good point. I think this has been a very good conversation. I would like to know, maybe from staff, if we were to move forward, if what we might be able to do is broach our direction to council with, similar to what Commissioner O'Donnell just said, maybe two options. One being, we feel that there's actually a lot more work that needs to be done here based on Internet sales and other things. However, in the sake of time, if they want to say, yes, that's something we're going to do, but we need to have some language set in place for the immediate future, then we recommend the following changes to the wording pending that investigation. Is that a direction we could provide?
That definitely is.
Is, okay. I'd like to ask my commissioners how you feel about that. Commissioner Vada?
I'll second that motion.
You second the motion? Okay. Motion and a second comment.
Well, I do like the idea of adding in the fact that it's made more strict by including restaurants, so I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Commissioner Erickson, you look like you had a comment?
So I would say the effort to clarify the definition is right on. That's taken at face value. I would not support including the language about the United States for reasons which are obvious, people listening to talk. But in while I, Mr. Arzy has been a source of perspective and history for the downtown area since I've been on the plane for me, so forth, I respect that. But the, but I would want the council to be forward-looking, not backward-looking, as they think about this issue. Not losing sight of history, but not being bound by history. And so it would be helpful to me to be, for them to be clearer about what their intentions as they look forward, in the context of what we've been talking about, the change in retail, what their intention is for having a definition like this. I mean, there's no requirement to have a definition like this. I mean, another option, we just eliminate it from the code. And, but so, as they think about this, why would they want it? Why would they want a definition? What would their intention be? That would be helpful, because in my time on the commission, it's not always been clear on what basis we should approve a CUP for a formula retail. And so it would be helpful for them to be forward-looking from my perspective, and to help us understand what the intent is.
And I would probably expect that all these comments then would be shared with the council in this discussion with our recommendation. Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner O'Donnell. Did you have a comment? Commissioner Hanson?
I did. Well, I just wanted to agree with what Commissioner Erickson said. I had talked about this earlier, you know, when we've seen these COPs in the past, we get a map of where all the formula retailers are, and then it's like, well, what criteria do you use to make a decision? Well, there's the, you know, thinking from the beginning where, you know, we wanted Los Gatos to be like this, and, but the retail world is changing. And so it's not always clear how to do this. And this, I thought, the minute I picked it up, it's just one piece in a whole picture and a whole strategy for the town, and this is just a small, small item that doesn't reflect the bigger picture. So I just hope that, I have no problem with the language of this as proposed, but it begs the question of what's going to happen after this? You know, is there going to be more discussion about what kind of retail balance do we want, and how does that play with the North Forty, and so on and so forth?
All right, Commissioner O'Donnell?
If I understood Commissioner Erickson's last remarks correctly, and I may not have, it seems to me that it might be, well, make a motion now to not adopt the proposed amendments, but rather to tell the council, the reason we're not adopting the proposed amendments is we think that the issue should be revisited, and before we tweak it, the whole thing be looked at. Now, they may say, look, that would take six months or whatever it would take, and therefore, we, let's get some things implemented in the interim. But we don't know that, and I am concerned, because there are two town visions on what we're dealing with here. Personally, I would like to say, I don't think this is the time to be dealing with these amendments as opposed to dealing with the basic issue. And therefore, I would propose that we adopt that kind of resolution as opposed to telling the council in the background, gee, Wes, we'd kind of like you to look at this, but oh, by the way, we're also going to tweak the ordinance. So I'm not in favor of tweaking the ordinance, at least at this point, unless the council just tells us, time being what it is, it's better to get something done, and then we'll study it. But I don't think we should presuppose that the council will necessarily say that.
So we actually have a motion out there?
Well, I would...
And since I was the one, I guess, that worded it, I was not saying I recommend approval. I, that was not what I was saying. I was actually saying that we recommend further investigation based on this conversation, and I just confirmed with staff, they will get verbatim notes of this conversation right now? Hold on, hold on.
Is it going back to the council?
This does go back to the council. We're recommending to council, and that in the immediate future, if something is needed to be dialed in on this, then we would approve this wording, but we're not recommending approval, we're recommending further investigation. Commissioner, Joel?
Which is definitely one direction that you can go. I would just offer that if that is the direction without a recommendation either for or against the ordinance amendments before you, then should they say, no, we want to do something in interim, this comes back to the planning commission, we have another hearing?
Oh.
And then you forward a recommendation that could be modified as you're proposing, or something completely different. Not knowing how that council discussion's going to go, it may create some delay in and of itself if there's not a recommendation one way or another for the ordinance, but...
And I guess there are two issues, and I don't want to confuse those two issues for you. The definition change really primarily is for staff. We've had ones come in, and we wrestle without the definition of those, all those terms, whether they fall within it or don't fall within it. It also helps the applicant. They might look at it, and, well, maybe I don't fall under that, because I don't know what the definitions are here. So it helps us, really, I think that was by Commissioner Hanson, really, what does this do for us? It really is more of a staff-driven, because we've had that problem. Sophie Ulo is the one that comes to mind, which we wanted to code enforcement on, because they didn't believe they were part of it, and, you know, as an interpretation, now with these changes, they definitely would have fell under it. So that's the first issue, really, is just, was a cleanup that we saw, that council saw also with which one should come and shouldn't come for the definition of what a retail. Then the second issue is, is does this, does this need more of a, what's the purpose and intent of it? So when it comes to you, what are the findings we're trying to make? What are the other things we need when it does get to us to really make us decide on whether we should allow this formula retailer, shouldn't? And I will say, yes, our ordinance is not as verbose as some of the other ones. I was just looking online, Malibu just did it, and a lot of them do do that percentage that we talk about. But some of those have also been challenged. So I think, in my mind, the recommendation is, yes, this definition's great, but there's much more work to be done on this ordinance for us to get where we want to be.
Well, we have a motion and a second, right? Okay. And would the maker of the motion consider, after listening to the staff, any amendments to the motion, or is that what we're going to vote on?
I really don't want to slow down the process, so I don't know if I change my motion to say we will approve, we recommend approval of the document in front of us, however, the commission strongly requests additional research into this topic based on the conversation. Can I ask the second of the motion what he thinks?
I agree.
I agree with you. I think we should move forward. This is a recommendation, not a ruling or an ordinance. This is us telling them what we think. They've asked us to do that with this one and with the next item on the agenda. So we've kind of already done our job, if they watch the tape or read the transcript. So I'm okay with what you said, Madam Chair, that we have some amendments to this language. Tom made a suggestion, I made a suggestion, and that we approve our recommendation as approval, and get it back to council, but then add all the other concerns we've had of, we've got issues coming on North Forty, and we want to keep the business district here in town vital and vibrant. And what else can we do along those lines? That's, so I support your motion, I support your amended motion, I still second it.
Right, Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to make sure, I've heard, at least a couple of us, say, we don't think the distinction on international versus national is a good one. So I don't know whether that's in the motion or not. I've also heard Commissioner Kane saying, and I agree with him, that number one should say standardized means identical or substantially the same, and I agree with that. We also, I think we had one or two other things. Yes, the language about the retail sales, including a restaurant, but the next line didn't include a restaurant.
Right.
And I think we probably agree on that. So I guess what I'm wondering is, does that, does that motion include those three items or not?
I think right now would definitely the two and the three. I think there was no opposition to that, but I think as to the first one, if in fact you want to change United States or eliminate that and go to international, I think there would be more discussion necessary. Or the motion would have to definitely reflect that.
Well...
Commissioner Kane?
Again, the recommendation is, listening to what we've said, and we've voiced two opinions. And I'm thinking about the downsides to what Commissioner Erickson has brought up. But I like my Parisian dress shop example. You know, if there's somebody out there with stores in Batshuana Land, or Paris, or wherever, and they want to come here with that store, they probably got something interesting. And that would be good for downtown. So I'm looking for the downside and the upside, and I'm leaning toward the upside. Whether or not that screws up this process, now we're going to have to bait into the, I don't care, I'll vote for it. But I hope they're watching what I said, which is, whatever that shop is, is probably going to be interesting. I'd let them in.
Commissioner Hanson? So I have a question for Ms. Renn. I'm looking at the staff report from the October 6 council meeting, and it talks about that our ordinance without the changes is more restrictive than just about any place because of the international versus US. And so that was the reason for the recommendation. So if our intent is to make it easier for downtown businesses to get a CUP done, I don't know why we would change the recommendation unless there's more research that needs to be done on that.
Would you like a response, or was that just a comment?
Yeah, was that a comment, or just a question?
I guess I'm asking you to confirm that is the... I guess I'm asking you to confirm that is the main reason that you, that that was brought up was because in your research, you've learned that having it be seven locations internationally versus US makes it more restrictive compared to other jurisdictions. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I think either way, we need to be clearer about it, because that's probably one of the number one questions I first get, is seven locations where? Seven locations in California? Because we just don't say it. We say seven existing locations, and then you respond anywhere in the world, and it's a little bit of a shock for that applicant to think about that for a minute. So whatever the choice is, I think we just need to be clear on what we're considering for those existing locations.
So to clarify, as the maker of the motion, I would prefer to keep it as it is. I do believe with the second, the third word changes, but the motion that I have made is going to keep the wording as is because, again, for various reasons, but I'm going to keep it as is. Commissioner O'Donnell?
With or without the...
I do not, I want it to stay as the United States. I do not want to make that change.
Oh.
So my motion is going to make the other changes in item number one, and the other item where we're adding the restaurant, but keeping the first paragraph where the state's located in the United States as is. Does the seconder agree with that?
Yes.
Do we have any? Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I just want to be clear, so you're saying if I have 100 shops in Canada, that doesn't count, right?
So what I'm saying is, I feel we have a very capable staff. And if somebody comes in with a chain of the Canadian equivalent of Applebee's, I imagine they're going to take a good look at that and probably say, we're having a hard time making decisions. And because we feel that this maybe rides on the fence, I think that we would probably see it, or we may see some recommendations on this? Or they just come on through because...
So I looked at it...
Unfortunately, the reason we have it now is a chain store is a chain store is a chain store, and it doesn't mean it affects where their locations are. We're making a substantial change to that and saying, if you have 100 stores in Mexico and you have 100 stores in Canada, doesn't count. If you've got eight stores in the United States, it does count. I don't think that makes much sense. And as far as the dress shop is concerned, it's never been a question of, is it a good store? It's been a question of, is it a chain store? We can always admit a good chain store, which we've done in the past, but we have to make that determination, a use permit determination, which is the normal use permit requirements that you wouldn't have to do if you didn't need a use permit. So I will not support the motion if we're going to say we only penalize American stores.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, or do we want to go ahead and take a vote? There's a motion on the table and a second. All in favor? Okay. All opposed? Passes four to three. Recommendation to the council. I assume because this is just a recommendation, there are no appeal or...
That's correct.
Okay. All right. We are now considering item number five, Town Code Amendment Application A-15-005, considering amendments to Section 29.10, .150 of Chapter 29 zoning regulations to revise the parking requirements for restaurants. We are, again, being asked to forward a recommendation denial to, or recommendation to the town council. And Ms. Ren, again, I understand that you will be giving us the staff report this evening?
I will be. Thank you. And we did receive some communication after the deadline today. Joel has that available. He's going to pass it out to you. Actually, I believe it addresses a little bit about the last conversation, and then mostly about the conversation that we're going to have right now. There are also additional copies of that letter that are on the bench over there, if anybody in the audience would like to read it. So, good evening. I'm Monica Ren again, Economic Vitality Manager. The discussion that we, that you have before you as item five is looking at the parking requirements for restaurants. Currently, we use parking requirements as a way to allocate seating maximums within restaurants, and this discussion is about decoupling the relationship between parking spaces and restaurant seating capacity. Again, the council did discuss this on December 15th. It came up at the first time at the October 6th meeting, and then was fully discussed on December 15th. The council came to the conclusion that they did feel that it would be a good idea to decouple, but wasn't sure what the best mechanism was then to allocate seats within a restaurant. So that could be square footage, it could be fire occupancy, or it could be another metric of parking, a different ratio. We did quite a bit of benchmarking all over the state of California and found that it's a pretty mixed what different jurisdictions do. Those that are more progressive tend to do just fire occupancy, so it would be like a building code. Some will also do a specific square footage. The fire occupancy code is roughly one per 15 square feet, and we've seen people do anything from 1 to 40 to 1 to about 75 square feet for seats. We do have a slide that we're working on. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties, but it does present to you some options and some hypotheticals for different sized restaurants, and what the seating capacities would look like based on various square footages, the current for the parking, as well as fire.
Can I answer any questions while we work on getting that laptop to work?
Commissioner Hanson and then Commissioner Erickson?
So if I understood, the slide you're going to have is going to give us an idea of what it would look like before and after, because that's probably the biggest question is, like, you know, we don't have a way of knowing it other than, you know, and if you look at these jurisdictions, they're all over the map. I mean, there's an equal number that have the seats per parkings, and the other ones that have square footage, and it's, there wasn't any real clear trend. And then the ones that use the fire safety code were not even in Santa Clara County, which I think council pointed out. So that was kind of, it would be helpful to have some more clarity.
Sure. Do you want to look at the slide, Commissioner Erickson? You want to go ahead and ask your question?
I have a really quick, simple question.
Okay.
That Monica will know the answer to, or Ms. Ren will know the answer to. So can you remind me, in the, in the building and fire codes, is it, is it one per 15 in the seating area, or the entire square footage of the building?
So it's dining area?
Yeah, that's what, that's what my recollection was, but that wasn't clear.
Okay. All right. So here's the chart, if I may, for one quick second. The top three slots, the top three slots show you what we currently allow. So we allow four seats for every parking space in the C2, which is downtown, and that's if the restaurant does not have a separate bar. If it does have a separate bar, it then goes one to, three to one. And then outside of downtown, we also use the three to one space. The bottom then gives you an idea of what the parking space credits are, because originally they're based on square footage. And then from that calculation, we then take the parking space credits and calculate out the number of seats that somebody could have. So that's why there's that bottom portion that lets you know what the square footage to parking is. The following lines, the first one would be fire occupancy. So obviously, that would be the most, the most lenient, because it's about how many people can be in that building, and it's approximately 1 to 15 square feet. And then we've done for three different sized restaurants what that would look like, at one for 25, one for 40, and so on, just to give you kind of an idea of order of magnitude based on square footage.
Commissioner Hanson?
I apologize. I know you just explained it, but the, the numbers under the 1,000, 1,800, and 2,300 are number of people allowed, or number of parking spaces that you would need to have?
So in the green, it's number of seats.
Okay.
So if I had a 1,000 square foot restaurant, and we did it by fire occupancy, I could have 67 seats. Would the restaurant have 67 seats? We don't know. They still have to meet ADA, they still have to be able to have the flow in and out, but that's what the fire code would say.
About how many seats they could have?
Right.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
One of the items we received attached tonight, or subsequent to the time, I guess, was a question of things like, you know, how crowded is downtown right now? How would this impact that? I mean, we all live there, go out to dinner and all that, and some nights it's very, very tough to get a parking spot. What impact would this have? You can see that it's, the point of this all is to liberalize the number of seats available, which of course means the traffic increases, I think. And then the question becomes, well, what's the impact of that? And what's the, what is the likely traffic impact if you, I mean, I think the fire code is crazy, but as far as parking is concerned. But if you went to one seat per 75 square feet, you get 13, one seat per 100, you go back to where you were when it was three seats, three seats per one space, there, I think, you've just got to figure, well, what does that mean as far as a net increase in traffic? Because we've had a lot of parking problems in town, and we've had people come in and say, we need a special ordinance, which they got, allowing valet parking. Now, we need another change, all of which I think will increase traffic. And the bottom line is, will that function? And so I think the one letter we received tonight was, could we have some breakdowns on those things? And while we have this breakdown, I don't think we have the breakdowns that were requested in Lee Quintana's letter to us. So have you seen that letter?
I have seen that letter.
And maybe I'm missing something, but does this purport to respond to all those issues?
No. So that request came in on Monday, and in order, first, we typically don't go out and count seats in restaurants. We, that's something that would be like a code compliance. If we received a complaint that there was someone over their seats, we would go out and do that, but we don't, wouldn't do that type of proactive enforcement. We also don't have the bandwidth of the staff to pull together that type of information in, in two days, to go out and count seats in 20 restaurants and figure out, you know, how many they were issued. A lot of COPs, as you know, run with the land, so maybe a CUP had been issued 30 years ago, but the restaurant's a year old.
Everybody made the point, and I think it's a correct point, that very few people pay attention to what their limitations are. And the answer to that is, well, we just don't enforce it, basically. So I guess if we don't enforce what we've got, what leads us to believe we will enforce things when we change it? I mean, people, my observation is that people have bars that don't have a use permit for a bar, they have more seats than they're allowed, they have, you looked at the number of seats versus what their permits have, they're somewhere in that chart, but they aren't where we would think they would be. And we don't know that. So now we're saying, please have everybody increase it. I'm troubled by that, because the town has consistently refused to enforce the use permits that we have granted. And now they're saying, or somebody's saying, change it all. And I guess, unless and until somebody enforces what we've done in the past, I don't know the impacts. So, anyway.
Commissioner Padame?
So my question, there's a concession that many restaurants are operating out of compliance. In fact, I think it's noted in Exhibit 3, Attachment 3. So if they are out of compliance, my question to you is, is impacting the retailers? And if so, are they making complaints to the town? Are you getting any complaints? So is it a matter of, we're not acting on the complaints, or are we just not getting any complaints to refer to code enforcement?
We have not received any complaints on seating. In fact, we have people who actually will adjust their hours based on the restaurant that's closest to them and their busy time, because they want to capture those people while they're waiting for their tables to be ready. So that's actually the only feedback I've heard from stores, is, I actually stay later on Friday night because I know that they're going to have a wait, and I can get those shoppers here. Again, dining is one thing, that experience, you can't get it online, you can't have it delivered. So that's what we see people coming downtown for, and then they stay to shop.
Thank you, Ms. Ren. Commissioner Hudes, and then I'm going to open this up to public comment.
Yeah, I had a question about the benchmarking and how we moved from the numbers in the benchmarking to the 300 or the 235 square feet. When I look at the benchmarks, I get, for the ones that have, that do it on the basis of square footage, I get an average of 109 square feet, one space per 109 square feet, on average of the nine or so that do it that way. How did we jump to 300 from that, if we did the benchmarking?
That's the square footage. It's currently in our code for all commercial spaces. So if you have a shop or a restaurant, you have to provide one space for every 300 square feet of your, of your commercial space.
Follow-up, please. The benchmarking was done on restaurants, is that correct, though?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's, I think, the apples-to-apples comparison.
So it's actually a backwards calculation. So if we have space A that is 1,000 square feet, it would require 3.33 parking spaces. If space A then comes in for a conditional use permit to open a restaurant, we would say, okay, you have 3.33 parking spaces, and you want a separate bar, so now you can only have 10 seats. So it's a backwards calculation, basically, and that's why it's there. The square footage per parking space is not something that is in front of you tonight for consideration. Does that make a little more sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it does. I'm going to open this up for public discussion now, comments, and then we can come back and have some more questions from staff and discussion. The first card I have is Jason Farwell. You'll have three minutes, and please make sure you pull the microphone up and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Farwell, 18 Park Avenue. This is a really, really, really important subject, and I think, from my perspective, fire, the occupancy is the best measure mark for determining the number of seats. I think as you look at the existing restaurants in town, they already are utilizing their available space. It's really a safety issue, in my mind, and what they can, each premises can handle. I think also these restaurants here in town are a big component to, and support, help support our retailers. I think to continue to restrict our restaurants with these, these parking requirements doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. The downtown is struggling. Restaurants in downtown are down 20 to 30% year over year. So if you go in and talk to the owners, they're struggling. Talk to the retailers, they're struggling. People are not coming to Los Gatos anymore. I go downtown in the evenings, and let me tell you, it's not difficult to find a parking space most evenings. Again, I think enforcement through fire. Fire typically makes an inspection of each premises on a yearly basis. What better opportunity for fire to determine whether or not somebody's in compliance with their seating requirements, right? I think it's a perfect opportunity. The town certainly is not doing that. They don't have the staff to do it. And I don't think they should be harassing the business community in order to determine what is best for their premises. I think each individual business owner should be able to establish what is the best use for their space, and allocate the seedings in a safe and responsible manner, and let the patrons come and support their business. A lot of empty seats in the restaurants downtown. So to the extent you got empty seats in one restaurant, let the other people fill the restaurants that they want to go to. We have good restaurants, bad restaurants. Let's hope the ones that are successful be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you. Alex Holt?
Good evening, council. I'm Alex Holt. I'm the owner of Holt's Restaurant in Los Gatos. I'm also the president for the Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to talk briefly about this little thing that we're talking about right now. I think that we're talking about something that we're going to make some changes potentially, and we're voting maybe today, or making a recommendation to enforce new rules. But the problem is, we already have rules, and no one follows them. I own a restaurant, and I have not once had anyone question how many seats I have, how many bar stools. The only thing that's important is that you're following ADA compliance. That gets checked, of course, when they do the building permit. And every restaurateur that I know, which is a lot, they're already using the space that they have. Manresa is going to have a lot of room between the tables. So is me, so is other restaurants that are a certain type of restaurant. Ondelay, other places where it's a little bit more fast food, burritos, tacos, it's going to be a little bit faster turnover, it's a different type of restaurant, they can squeeze in the tables a little bit closer, because it doesn't really matter, because people are having a different expectation when they're paying $9 versus $30 for an entree. So we're kind of talking about two things that are a little bit not making sense to me. You made a great point, Commissioner... people are having a different expectation when they're paying $9 versus $30 for an entree. So, we're kind of talking about two things that are a little bit not making sense to me. You made a great point, Commissioner O'Donnell, that we are talking about making a change to new rules, when we currently have rules that no one follows. And that doesn't make any sense. Isn't it better to just find something that, like, makes perfect sense? Like, Mr. Farwell said, that the fire inspector comes out once a year, you have to pay the $50, you have to have him walk through everything, make sure you're doing everything right. They quickly count the seats and tell you, yeah, you're doing good. This is safe, ADA compliance, fire, everything is perfect. And the restaurant will figure out their own ways, how many seats, how many tables they will fit in each restaurant. It's not going to increase traffic at all, because restaurants are currently already maximizing their space, because it's the only way to survive, it's the only way to pay your bills. We're literally running with, like, 8% to 12% margins on the bottom line, and if we don't utilize the space that we have, there's no way to make money. It's impossible. Like, I worked 10- to 15-hour days, every single day, for the last two years, and I'm still yet to make money. So, it's a very hard business that we choose. We do it because we love it, and to limit us, I don't think is the right move. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Erickson.
I love your restaurant. But what I want to understand here is, because we agree on a lot, but I, it appears to me that you're saying, you could fill your restaurant now with, under our present rules. You say, nobody checks, but nobody's ever told you, stop filling your restaurant. So, apparently, the filling of your restaurant is unrelated to the present parking regulations. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, changing the parking regulations, in essence, shouldn't affect you?
No.
Okay. But yet, you're asking us to change the parking regulations. Why is that?
No, to me, it just doesn't make sense to have rules that no one follows. That's the only thing. I think that we should make sure that the business community get as many opportunities as we can to run a business, and that's what I think we're currently doing. And, like, to making it tighter or making it looser, it's not really anything that matters. I think the point is that people are going to do what they have to do to survive, and I think we should let them. And I think, out of these options, the only common sense option is to do it by fire code.
Well, you understand the fire code has nothing to do with parking. It has to do with buildings burning down and people getting out of the building?
Yes.
So, you want us to impose a restriction that has nothing to do with parking on a parking issue, is that right?
I don't think parking has anything to do with how many customers I should be able to seat in my restaurant, because there's going to be the same amount of parking spots today as tomorrow. And however good food I serve, it's going to dictate how busy my restaurant is, and how much space each guest is going to have. And I'm not going to add a single seat if this gets approved, not one. I don't need to, because I am already putting the seats that I need to run my business. And if I were to count the seats, I might be, like, five or 10 over right now. And I know other restaurants that are a lot more over already, but they would not add any more seats, because there's nowhere to put them.
I agree with you. So, that's why I keep wondering, why do people want to change, if they're telling me they've got as many seats as they need, and their job is to fill them? And yet, two of you, representing, really, the local community, I have a lot of respect for that, say, nevertheless, we should change something. And I'm just trying to find the reason why we should change something.
The reason why I think we should change it is, right now, there's a lot of restaurants that are out of compliance. And there's no point of having rules if you're not going to follow them. And I don't think we should make it harder to do business in Los Gatos, because we're already losing businesses left and right. We want to make it flourish, and make it come back, and become the new Campbell. And the only way to do that is to make the rules easier, to understand, easier to follow. And I think fire code is the one that makes sense.
Commissioner Erickson.
So, I too like your restaurant, and as long as you don't add ludus to the menu, I'll still keep coming. So, do you have a sense, Alex, of, Mr. Holt, how many square feet per seat do you have in your restaurant? So, how close are you to 15? Do you, I don't, that's an unfair question to ask you off the top of your head, but do you have a sense?
I can only make an estimate. My space is 4,300. I think about 2,000 of that is dining area, and I have 114 seats approved. So, if you do the math quickly, 2,000--
One to 20, maybe.
Something like that.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, that's great, yeah.
Any other questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jack Van Natta.
Good evening. My name is Jack Van Natta. I became more interested in local politics about four years ago. Though there are always problems and challenges to resolve, three of the biggest issues that I hear repeatedly have been traffic, school crowding, and lack of parking downtown. It would seem to me that all proposed changes to the way things are must be measured by the increased benefits those changes would make to the residents of Los Gatos. The way I read the staff report, the main consideration is to give business greater flexibility to adjust to a changing environment, and thus, Los Gatos becomes more business-friendly. It would seem to me that there are two fundamentals to consider, each with its own subcategories. One, what is the advantage of this change to the citizens of Los Gatos? And two, what are the disadvantages to the citizens of Los Gatos? Ultimately, there should be a community benefit that exceeds the existing benefits of the project. The advantages that I do see would be the potential of increased sales tax revenues to the town, two, the ambiance of sitting outside versus inside, which may be subjective, but it might increase business, and it might increase tax revenues. Three, it may make Los Gatos seem more alive. The disadvantages that I see would be an increased need for parking. Lyft nor Uber have not resolved current parking issues. Two, more traffic, a problem that is currently unresolvable with our restricted infrastructure. Three, the net increased sales tax revenue has to be weighed against the increased cost of police and emergency services that are a product of increased restaurant and bar activity. We need to know that there is a significant benefit in terms of dollars for the costs that will incur as residents. I don't have an issue at all with a change in seating if it does not impact the residents of Los Gatos. Currently, we don't have any idea about the fiscal impacts and few measures of any subjective gains. Potential solutions to our parking problems are, one, the town has taken steps to help the parking situation by receiving bids for proposals on a parking, housing, and retail facility. Two, we are currently studying the use of new technology for guiding drivers to empty parking spaces. However, the benefits of these fixes are years off. Why would you want to create more problems before we solve the current problems that we already have? How are we, the long-term citizens of Los Gatos, going to benefit from adding more seating? The net seems to be to bring on the pain first, and then hopes, hope that the attempts to relieve parking issues will solve the problems later. If you're going to create changes for us, please create the solutions coincidentally with the changes you make. One sentence. That way, the merchants and the Los Gatos residents can both benefit from these proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you. Lee Quintana is our next speaker.
Lee Quintana, I am going to request that the planning commission consider continuing this item. As I stated in my email to staff, I think the code revisions involve both economic vitality and planning issues. I would add to that, it also involves the potential for increasing existing parking deficits, increasing traffic, and increasing parking spillover further into the neighborhoods surrounding downtown and possibly other business centers. I'm sorry to be negative, but it is my opinion that the staff report does not present a balance of these three interests, but is weighted on the side of economic vitality and the business community. Additional, and I want to add, okay, never mind. Additional information is necessary for the public to provide informed responses to the proposed revisions, whether they be positive or negative responses. And it's also necessary for the planning commission and town council to make informed decisions and balanced recommendations and decisions that will benefit not only the business community, but the residents that support our local businesses. It is therefore, and at this point, I want to mention that this was the response that I got from my email to town, which is not included in your packet. It therefore blows my mind that, rather than providing the requested information, staff's report was to turn the responsibility for doing the research and generating the requested information back to me, much like when a doctor plays Blame the Patient. Although I do not think it's the public's responsibility to provide this information, I am willing to participate in the research. However, given the time of the staff's response to me and my own time constraints, I was not able to provide that information tonight. And in addition, the information that the staff emailed to me suggested was available on the town's website is not all available on the town's website. I therefore request a continuance to allow time to gather the information, as well as time to better reach out to town residents who are also stakeholders in this. The businesses were reached out to, but not with the same degree as town residents. In addition, I would like to support what Jack Van Natta said, and the email, or the letters, both letters, from Larry Arzy and from Paul G. I think more information is necessary for an informed decision. We all live in this town, and we need to balance the needs of the residents and the businesses. We don't have more parking. If we're not, if we're not meeting the codes, restaurants aren't meeting the codes, perhaps we need to enforce them.
Commissioner King.
Ms. Quintana, if you're asking for a continuance, give me a reason. And so, the question is, is what specific information do you want that you didn't get? And how would it help us?
Read my email, I mean--
I did.
--to the town. I don't think we have the sufficient information specifically in the downtown to really understand the differences between what the CUPs that all these restaurants agreed to when they were issued, and the actual seating that they have, and what that does to the difference between their required, the parking spaces that they have credit for, and the parking spaces they would need. I.e., what is the impact on the noncompliance with restaurants on the parking problems that the town has? And the more parking deficits there are, the more there's pressure in surrounding neighborhoods to have special permits that don't require, that prohibit parking except for residents, which then pushes the problem further out to other places.
But my question was, what specific information do you want? And what you said was, I want to have a survey of seats that were permitted and seats that actually exist. Is that correct?
Actually, you know what? I don't have a copy right here with my email to the town.
Commissioner King, are you just looking for a yes or no answer?
Yes.
What was the question? It wasn't a yes or no question.
The second one was. The first one was, what information do you want? Your answer was, you want more information about the amount of seats that are being used versus the amounts of seats that were approved. And then you wanted to discuss the support of that. So, I'm saying--
I, in my email, I requested maximum seating allowed under current CUPs, the number of seats currently provided by the restaurant, the number of parking spaces required per current code, the number of credits in the parking district or onsite parking, the maximum seating allowed under the proposed fire code, the maximum seating allowed using a square footage formula. And this is specific to restaurants in the downtown, and I think I made the request that it be for the 20 most recent restaurants that have been approved by a CUP. And to provide a table of downtown sites that have the potential to intensify based on their existing parking credits, or that have the potential to add square footage, which would therefore require additional parking spaces. I think all that information is important in making an informed decision. And also, I believe that, as with the last item that came before you, that's one piece of the problem, or the puzzle with the downtown. This is another piece of the puzzle or problem with the downtown. Maybe we need to look at it all together, not piecemeal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. Michael Strauss. Mr. Strauss, you'll have three minutes. Make sure you pull that microphone up and introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. Commissioners and staff, my name is Michael Strauss. I am a town resident, but I'm actually here tonight in my professional capacity as Director of Development for Federal Realty Investment Trust, best known in the South Bay for owning and developing Santana Row, which has obviously come up a number of times this evening. We also own Old Town Center here in the town through one of our affiliate entities, and also manage King's Court with Lunardi's. Wanted to comment on the concept of divorcing restaurant seating from parking stall counts. And this is with, I'm here with great deference to staff and to all the great work that the staff here does. And it's atypical for us, as an institutional owner, to comment on, publicly, on an issue like this, but this was important, and it just came to our attention. So, we wanted to put our thoughts out there, and my personal thoughts as well. This is, it's not something we can support at this time. The way we look at this is not a, this is not a seating issue, this is a parking issue. And maybe I'm misunderstanding exactly what's happening here, but I don't see how it wouldn't lead to increased congestion and parking demand. That's the first point. Number two, we are a property owner that has parking, and has parking facilities adjacent to our, to our retail centers. At Old Town Center, we have two lots, and we also have significant phantom inventory. We did participate in the parking assessment district back in the day, and have about 150 phantom stalls that we've purchased, and have available for our tenants to use. I think, there's also a practical matter, that parking should correlate with the number of seats. If there are more seats, there are more people who can be in a particular establishment at a certain time. And more times than not, in the world in which we live, and here in the town, those people drive, and they have to have somewhere to park. So, it feels like increasing the density in the restaurants here in the town would absolutely lead to increased congestion. And the last quick point is that the idea of an equivalency of parking requirements for retail and for restaurant seems misguided to us. In my experience, it's atypical, except for a shopping center rate. And in a lot of jurisdictions, there is a shopping center rate, but that smaller, single establishments would typically need to park to a higher ratio. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No? Thank you. Our next speaker is Angelina Dornar.
Hello. I'm Angelina Dornar, proud resident of the Yomagrove. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but thought I'd start off with, you know, I started coming to these planning commissions, and I've learned an awful lot, and I'm still confused about an awful lot. I started coming about 18 months ago. And the craziness that some of the seating versus parking discussions that have gone on have just been literally crazy, especially with the new establishment up on Los Gatos Boulevard in Blossom Hill. But we're talking about downtown. So, I know that something needs to be done with the current-- So I know that something needs to be done with the current calculations or whatever. But what bothers me is that the common thread here from the businesses or the restaurants and bars is that we're breaking the rules, so get rid of the rules. We just have not been enforcing things. And I just feel that it's a real issue in not having a control point. You know, are we having more parking problems because people are breaking the rules and therefore maybe the conditions in the CUP and what we currently have in place do make sense? Or are they somewhat following the rules and we still have parking problems? We need to know that. We need to have a better understanding of what is really causing some of the issues in our downtown area. The other thing is that valet parking was just reviewed and just passed, you know, the end of this last year. And the whole reason for the valet parking consideration was because there is no parking. And so the increasing of turnover of the restaurant and the use of existing space was for valet parking. And it made sense and it could be quantified and someone tried it. I haven't heard any results from any other people other than Mr. Holt, who actually brought that forward. What other restaurants and bars have tried some of these other things that have come up and have already been approved and vetted by you and by the Town Council? The other thing is that they want to serve more, but parking be darned. So we need valet parking because parking is an issue, but we want to serve more, but we don't want to hear about parking. They are intermingled. They have to be handled collectively. The other thing that I just wanted to bring up is that there have been a lot of complaints in the last six to nine months especially, from retail owners at Town Council meetings, verbal communications, talking about the flowover from bars and restaurants, people smoking outside the back doors, people peeing on the front windows, you name it. I mean, there have been a lot, a lot of complaints, more than I was aware of, and I live downtown. So I just really think that the impact on the surrounding retail organizations have got to be considered. And if, you know, a lot of the better restaurants don't have televisions, those with televisions, you're talking about all of the football games, basketball games and everything else. You've got the increased business that will be affecting those retail operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No. Don Kapovras? Oh, no? Okay, sorry. Larry Arzy.
Mr. Erickson thinks I'm old. Planning Commission, our current version of tying seating to parking started 30 years ago through the parking district ordinances. It was meant to fairly provide parking for downtown shoppers and the business community. These regulations codified by bonds to build more parking infrastructure was agreed upon by the town, restaurants, small business and property owners, commercial property owners. In my mind, this is a contract. For the town to change the rules without providing more parking is just not acceptable. Just because we don't follow the regulations doesn't mean we have to change them. These regulations work when we want them to work, so save them. So why are we reconsidering them without adding more parking? Decoupling seating to parking is a current conversation by staff and restaurants only because there is no way they can increase seating without providing more parking or without consent of Town Council. Decoupling parking from seating would be the ultimate betrayal to the community. Making it easier to add seats without planning new parking infrastructure serves to only benefit the most intense users of parking, and that is restaurants, certainly not small retailers. Decoupling may work for areas outside the Central Business District, but to intensify the CBD without any more parking is just not good planning. You know, I didn't cover money. Of course, decoupling of parking to seating will increase restaurants' bottom line and provide more tax revenue. But most of all, how will it benefit the non-restaurant uses? Non-restaurant businesses and property owners will be affected the most, not just because there will be less parking for their clients or customers, but they are at a disadvantage in that an inadequate change means they paid an obvious percentage more for parking than restaurants. Changing the parking district regulation shortchanges the majority of property owners.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Erickson?
Just for the record, I have great respect for my elders.
Thank you for that. I do not have any other speaker cards. I don't see anyone else coming up, so I'm going to close the public portion of this. And I'm going to-
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I ask a question of you and whether this is permissible? I would, I actually have a question of the gentleman from Federal Realty Trust that I would like to ask, is it possible to have him return to the podium for me to ask him the question?
Yeah, I am fine with that. I am going to ask when you come up, though, to restate your name for the record because this is being recorded.
Sure, my name is Michael Strauss.
So, given your experience and the breadth of your experience and the breadth of your company, are there industry standards that would help inform us of this question? What's the average length of time that someone stays in a retail store versus the average length of time that one would stay in a restaurant? That has implications for parking, obviously. And are there industry standards that help us understand when I'm in a location like a downtown area, do I tend to go to the restaurant and only stay at the restaurant? Do I tend, if I go to a retail establishment, do I tend to, on the average, visit four of them, two of them, six of them? Are there industry standards that you would have to be aware of in order to plan when you're planning where you have, because a lot of your locations, like they are here, have their own parking. So you not only need to meet the standards of whatever the town has, but from a practical standpoint, you need to provide enough parking, no matter what those standards are, to make the businesses work, which may dictate you need more than what the town would require. So you understand the question I'm asking? So how do we think about, and are there industry standards that would help inform us thinking about those issues?
Commissioner, that's a tough question to answer. I would address it this way. Number one, I'd be interested in staff's response to the same question, but I would say that-
I intend to ask them too, so.
Okay. I would say that it really depends on the sort of restaurant and the sort of business as to how many or how long the average customer stays. I mean, it's a classic business school throughput versus, you know, it's a tough question. I would say that typically, at least in my experience, the way it's addressed is through the parking requirements where that typically a retail use would have a lower requirement than a restaurant. For example, a typical, when we start looking at a piece of property, we would start with an assumption of a four spaces per thousand square feet for retail and call it 10 per restaurant. No, implicit in that is a mix of restaurants and a mix of retail. And it's really, it would be tough to drill down to such a specific set of uses in order to really consider how long somebody is staying in a particular category of business. So it's a tough question to answer, but it's exactly the right way to be thinking about the complexity of this issue, in my opinion. So I'm not sure if I addressed your question.
You addressed it best you could, so that's, yeah, yeah, thanks. So the kind of, the examples that you talked about in terms of number of parking per thousand square feet, the different kinds of ones, presumably are based upon or grounded in some assumptions about how long people stay in average things, one of the things that you would take into effect if you're doing that, I assume. So that's the kind of industry standard that I was actually interested.
Right. And I would say it's across the board, but that's the most standard kind of metrics that I can think of. And it's, the trend is that the rates are going down, which causes property owners and developers to want to overpark their centers relative to code. But that's the best standard that I can volunteer.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Chair Birch.
Yeah, don't leave. I think we may have another question for you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood one part of your answer.
Sure.
I think you said, sort of as a rule of thumb, four, on retail, four parking spaces per, I don't know, it was a thousand square feet.
A thousand square feet of retail.
But then I thought you said 10 for a restaurant. Did you say that?
That's the metric that I'm most, that I see, that we see most often, that generally the idea is that you need to park restaurants at a higher rate than retail because people, because people stay longer, you can pack more people. You don't typically go into a retail store, at least if it's not the Apple Store, and you're shoulder to shoulder with someone. So there's a lot baked into that, but that's the best.
So that's tougher than anything we have up there on the board, then? The 10, right? 10 per thousand?
It's hard to go in, you know, between schemes, I guess, but I would expect that it certainly, it would be. I don't think anybody could actually pack enough seats in to really meet the fire occupancy.
Yeah, that wasn't, yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
All right, thank you. So now I'm really closing the public portion of this item. And I am going to suggest to my fellow commissioners, because I have a hunch this is going to be a bit of a conversation, why don't we go ahead and take a quick break now, five-minute break, and then we'll come back and continue our discussion. Bringing the meeting back to order. Thank you, everyone. My fellow commissioners, if you have any questions of staff, comment, Commissioner O'Donnell.
I've been trying to find what it is we're trying to solve. I find out that apparently some people believe the restaurants aren't full. It's not clear to me how adding more parking will fill the restaurants. I also find out that last month, we needed valet parking because there wasn't adequate parking. But this month, we should increase the number of people going to restaurants, and it isn't quite clear to me why. Normally, when something comes before us, there's a problem that needs to be solved. I have not identified the problem. The two people who spoke said they have as many seats as they want. Nobody has appeared before saying they need more seats. So this is a solution in search of a problem. So I guess I'm mystified what we're supposed to do. And then the choices are to take a fire code that is totally unrelated to parking, has nothing to do with it, and say, we're going to apply that here, which makes zero sense. So if I, if somebody could identify what the problem is, maybe we could find out. You know, if we went back to ground zero and said, what are your present permissions? And we'll start with there, we'd cut back a lot of seats in this town. Let's assume that the town has permitted 2,000 seats. And let's further assume that there are 3,000 seats in this town. And we said, let's go back to what you're supposed to have, 2,000. Now we're going to increase that by 10%. So now you're going to have 2,200. That's a net decrease of 800. I don't think that's going to solve their problem. But I think it is, everybody admits, that nobody's paying a lot of attention to the existing use permits. So I think what Lee Gutan asked for was just a heck of a lot of work there. I'm not sure it's worth the work, but if you did what she asked for, I think you'd find out that we're way over the permitted seats. So, you know, you have to be really careful what you ask for, because if we were to carefully analyze this problem, the first thing I'd like to know is what's permitted and what's in use? Because you can't solve this, do you find out what's going on? And we don't know what's going on. We could take the use permits that exist and add up the seats, but it would not tell us what in fact is out there. And we have been talking about this for some years, and the town says we don't have the enforcement staff. I believe that, but it doesn't change it. So I don't see what the problem is, and I don't see how it is benefited by jamming more people into a restaurant. So that's my thought.
Okay. So I actually think that's a very good place to jump off for our discussion. I'm going to ask Ms. Ren. I don't think that this came to us because there was a problem in front of us. So if you could, please, give us a little bit of background on the council, the reasoning behind their discussion, and then give us a quick summary of what the current guidelines are. I think that will help our discussion moving forward.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was thinking, kind of the evolution of this. So there was not a specific problem identified. As the conversations kind of started, I believe they started around formula and outdoor seating. And as the outdoor seating policy was considered by first the policy committee and then by the council, what question, the couple of questions came up for them. One is, if we allow someone to put a couple chairs outside, can we allow them to go over what their CUP says? So then there was a discussion around that whole thing, is if it's a beautiful day and we put three chairs outside, does that now impact anything for them? The next question that came up was in the face of how retail/restaurant experiences are changing. We're seeing a lot of people shift to this model of one large table, like this one in front of us, that may seat two or three parties. Or maybe there's a couch with a fireplace. Now, what's a seat? Is the rim around the fireplace a seat? Is that three-cushion couch a seat for three people, a seat for two people, a seat for one? So then you get into the conversation of if these businesses start to change how they look and how they feel. For example, we get a lot of requests for, hey, I want to have this quick place to grab a bite to eat or a cup of coffee. I don't want seats, I want a stand-up counter. You know, well, then we get into, are so many inches a seat? How many people are there? Is that a seat? Is that not a seat? So that's kind of where the conversation started to snowball or started to evolve, is how do we look at this globally? How do we look at creating the most opportunity for someone to come in and have a viable business that then creates the synergy for people to stay and shop? And one thing I will point out is, specifically in downtown, we saw this for our benchmarking too, is a lot of times people will have different regulations for downtown versus outside of downtown. There's the idea around that when you come into a downtown such as ours, it's very rare that somebody comes for one thing. So you may come and have a drink somewhere, have dinner somewhere, you may shop while you're waiting, you may do a couple things at one time. Sure, people do come and park and go to one place and leave, but the idea is that by creating this downtown, there's more of a walkability, there's more of the idea that people stay. So that was something else that the council talked about, is, well, if people are kind of staying, what does that look like? Does that one seat really equate to that parking space then? So it wasn't necessarily one problem, it was the evolution of all of these kind of conversations that I think, I believe, caused the council to say, well, let's look at it. How can we create opportunity? Let's not make more, and I'm kind of summarizing what I understand they said, is instead of creating more complicated rules that fit what our economy looks like right now, how do we create a different kind of blanket opportunity for people to shape what business looks like as it changes?
I don't think, though, you're done, right? Are you going to give us a synopsis of what the current regulations are then at the end of that? Thank you.
So currently, the regulations are what you see on those top three lines for seats in a restaurant. Online, there is the conditional use permit chart that lists the conditional use permit for every food and dining establishment, drinking establishment in town. And from there, you can see what they're allowed. For the downtown, for people who have purchased more parking credits, they may be outside of that square footage backwards calculation because that property has extra park, phantom parking spaces in the Assessment District.
Commissioner Hanson, Badami, and then O'Donnell.
I was going back to the benchmarking, because this is great work that you did that, because it's kind of helpful. And I was kind of doing my own, you know, comparison of like, what town are we most liking? And maybe the right way to look at, because maybe, you know, we don't want to be like other towns. But the thing that was troubling me is why we're even going down the path of uncoupling parking from seating at all, because I'm looking on here and there's not a single jurisdiction in here that has done that, other than these ones that are, you know, well, Sacramento and Simi Valley, Lampak, Redding, no, not even Redding. And so I, it would trouble me to take a, to go- even Redding. And so I, it would trouble me to take a, to go that far in the absent compelling reason to do so, especially given all the other discussion that we heard. So, and I did have one question on the analysis, that it said downtown restaurants in San Jose do not require parking. Do you know why that is?
So if I, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just that they can have the amount of seats, they don't have a parking requirement, so it's not one spot for four seats, it's just there, they would be fire occupancy.
So they are the one place in Santa Clara County that, the one part of San Jose within, and also within Santa Clara County, where they haven't coupled parking to seating in the restaurant? Because all these other, you know, bullet points here do put restrictions for parking tied to seating, except for their downtown restaurants. And they have a lot of street parking, you know, paid street parking, parking garages there. So I didn't, I was just curious, you know, I watched part of the council discussion, but not all, but I mean, did that not come up as an issue? Because there isn't, the benchmarking says that we would be going a place that very few have gone before.
That did come up, and I, if I remember correctly, the comment was, well, we don't necessarily need to fit ourselves into a peg that already kind of exists, and that the desire was to decouple the seats, but the council really didn't clearly think about each path. We got the sense that they wanted to go least restrictive, but they really wanted to give that to the planning commission to consider, to really think through each of the options.
And a follow-up question. I mean, one of the side points related to this was, you know, does it make more sense to tie parking to the square footage or the seats? And I thought there's some good points in the staff report, given that the different formats of restaurants, there isn't necessarily the concept of seats as much in some of them. You know, that might argue in favor of switching from seats to square footage, but I wasn't hearing the argument for abandoning a tie to parking altogether.
You know, it's interesting, if I may comment on that, I have had at least one restaurant person come to me and ask, so if I were to remove all of the seats in my restaurant and somehow change my service format to a stand-up, like a social party, at that point, it wouldn't matter. I could have as many people as the fire code would let me. And it's not that I had a good answer for them, but that is an interesting thing to think about, is once we provide, you know, the seat, does that really change how long they stay, maybe? Does that change how, you know, the difference between someone who's gone in for a cup of coffee or a meal? You know, it's all of those different things that I think Commissioner Erickson was speaking about with the gentleman from federal. It's just really depends on the type of product in the place.
Well, and I, kind of a follow-up on that, supposing that the ultimate direction was to go in the area of the square footage, given the other testimony we heard tonight, if you have a higher-end restaurant, they're obviously going to have less, they're going to have, you know, not as much in the square footage as, you know, as a fast food restaurant. So you kind of have to have different standards for different kinds of restaurants, I would think, if you were going to go down that path. And, but then the seat thing is complicated too, because some of those places won't have seats. That was all my questions.
Commissioner Badami?
So what I got out of your summary was somewhat covered by Commissioner Hanson, and that is, the reason this basically has come before us is because we have an evolution in dining and what actually constitutes a seat. Is that correct?
Yes, that's partially correct, yes. And that's part of the equation.
Okay, so we almost have to look at the types of restaurants and bars that we have in town and the opportunity they might have, for example, lounge furniture, or maybe just standing up around a table.
And I think part of this that I failed to mention in my synopsis of the council is the other thing that they really were driving to look for in all of this conversation is simplifying things for businesses, simplifying permit processes, simplifying how you under, how one person can understand. Oftentimes, it takes us as staff here, a long time to really pick apart what the rules are and how can we expect an applicant to pick that apart, understand it, when they have, you know, so much more going into it. And I think that's kind of where the basis of a lot of this conversation started for the council, is just that simplicity piece.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I still don't understand the real problem, because I go out to dinner in town all the time, and if you posit your situation where there are no seats, I'm not quite sure what you serve in that kind of restaurant, but if it's a bar, you have to have a conditional use permit, and if you have a conditional use permit, you can limit the conditional use permit so that it is reasonable. So I don't think that's a problem. Secondly, the market, I don't believe, there's nobody in town that has a restaurant that has no seats, because there are a lot of old people like me that need a seat, you know. So I'm still trying to find the problem. Last month, the problem was there was not adequate parking. Today, the restaurants aren't full, so I guess there's adequate parking, because they're not full, but the rules are too complex, and oh, by the way, they're not following them anyway, and we should change the rules. But I guess I'd like to know how far away from the rules are we presently? How do we solve a problem that we don't understand? To what extent are we beyond what we've permitted? We have bars in this town that were never permitted. We have seats in this town that were never permitted. How many seats are permitted in this town, and how many seats are there? Because if you want to solve a problem, I guess you have to understand what you're solving. So this commission didn't agree with the parking issue last time. The council said, no, no, we know what we're doing, and I'm sure they do, because that's their job. But last month, it was a different problem than it is this month, and I don't think things change that fast. So coupling and uncoupling, number one, as I said before, the fire marshal's rules have nothing to do with a restaurant. They have to do with life, survival, and building survival in different uses. That's true. But it has nothing to do with parking. Fire department doesn't care how many parking spots you've got. They want to know if they can get in the building and get out of the building. So I don't see that that's relevant at all. And then we say, well, let's use square footage. We could use square footage. You could use, for example, one seat per 75 square feet. That's 13, which gets you down to seating allowance of three speeds, three seats per one space. So you can call it X, or you can call it Y, if it's the same thing, it's probably okay. But the problem doesn't seem to be with the rules. The problem seems to be with the enforcement of the rules. The council has not talked about how we're going to enforce the rules, nor have they talked about what the baseline is today. So I have, I looked for the problem tonight, I haven't found the problem, and to the extent they want to change that, I couldn't possibly go with the fire code, because it's totally unrelated. It's, you know, it just doesn't even make any sense. So then you can get into one seat per 25 square feet, which is 40 per thousand, or one seat per 40, that's 25, or whatever, all the way down to 10. I'd like to go down to 10. That's kind of what it is today. If that, that'll make it easier for people, because they know how many square feet they've got. So it isn't the problem of square footage, it's the problem of how many customers per square footage. So if all we want to do is talk about square footage, we have no testimony today on the relationship between that square footage and parking, nor do we have any testimony today as to the adequacy of the parking, except what the business community told us last month, which was there's inadequate parking. So to, and I've also heard tonight that there are, we're not filling the seats. So how will that help us if we have more empty seats? So I'd be, I'm just totally confused by what is before us tonight, and I would certainly look to my fellow commissioners to explain the problem to me and explain the solution.
Commissioner Kane, and then I'm going to ask a question.
Well, I don't think there is a problem in these documents. We have a 25-page verbatim report of town council's meeting, and nowhere in there can I find anybody stating a problem, with one exception. They're not looking to us to solve a problem, they're looking to us to give them a vetted consideration for what standard shall we have. And what that does is, when you begin that process, you get into two other problems. One is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. To say it another way, if it is broke and nobody cares, don't fix it. Because that's what we've got when people are violating the CUP, and nobody's able to do anything about that. The violations are obviously not heinous and town-destructive, or we would. They simply want a more clear standard, a simple standard for determining the seating. The problems are, as councilperson Leonardo said, we need a bigger bucket. And so all the things we're talking about are going to come back to the same spot. We need a parking structure on Main Street, and that's what he said, and that's the one thing I got out of these 25 pages. They talked a lot about the process, Mayor, Vice Mayor Seok did, on how to get it done, and the town attorney was there, we'll ask him some questions later, but I think they're only looking for a better mousetrap, a simple, better mousetrap. At the end of that is, where do we put these cars anyway? And what, if anything, shall we do about folks violating the CUP? I think we can make this in a tempest in a teapot, or we could just give them a recommendation, something reasonable, whatever square footage is recommended, and then give them the rest of the stuff about, I think we need a parking structure. And that would really help with vitality, which is what this is all, both of these things are supposed to be about, improving, increasing vitality. Need a parking structure.
Okay, I'm going to ask a quick question for conversation. In listening to Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Kane, and some of the discussion, I think there seems to be a feeling, now I haven't heard everyone talk, that parking's already kind of an issue downtown. And I'm limiting my comments right now to downtown. I'm not venturing out from that space right now. But council is saying, this way we're calculating it based on seats to number of parking spaces is kind of difficult. So you go to the extreme, fire code, which is never going to happen. Or if we're looking at the chart that's been provided by staff, do we want to say, okay, we're not, we're going to uncouple it from seats, which is what council seems to be asking us to take a look at. And we're going to look at that top line, for example, and say seating allowance of four seats per one space without a separate bar. Okay, from now on, if a restaurant falls under that category, that category is now calculated at one seat per 75 square feet. We really haven't changed the seating, we've just made it an easier calculation. Can we look at that, and then we say the next line, three seats with a separate bar? Well, now if it falls under that category, it's one seat per 100 square feet. And we basically are just taking the seating out of that category and changing it to square foot.
I think that was a question, that was a question, correct?
It was a question for them, like, what's the read? So, yeah, all the hands went up, it was great. Hanson, Erickson, O'Don, Kane?
The problem with that is that it's uncoupling parking completely from the seating. So it's, what is the problem? Are you trying to determine how many seats to have, or, you know, are we just going to disregard the parking thing entirely? Because, like, as I was saying, all the benchmarking, there was no one else doing that.
No, that's true. Again, I'm trying to just get to a discussion with everybody. If we were trying to look at this and we didn't want to make a change, how would we want to word it? How, what would your suggestions be?
Well, I mean, if you were going to do, if you were going to switch what you tie parking to, you could switch it from seats to, to square footage, just like the gentleman from federal, you trust, 10, 10 spaces for 1,000 square feet, or whatever the metric is that you use. I mean, you can certainly...
And maybe I totally just said all that wrong. I think that's what I was trying to say.
Okay. Well, in looking at the slides that staff had, they were more oriented around not taking parking off the table entirely versus changing the metric by which you calculate parking as it ties to seating.
Like I said, I was just trying to, I think we all just understand what's broke. I was trying to come up with just ideas and a discussion on what would we start recommending. Commissioner Erickson and Commissioner Kane, do you want to say something?
Okay, so I have a, with the indulgence of the chair, I have a couple of questions for Ms. Ren, to be sure that I understand what's being proposed. So if I understand what's being proposed, and I'm not commenting on whether I think it's a good idea, bad idea, but if I'm understanding what's being proposed, is not doing any relationship between the building code and parking. The one, the building code, the fire and building code relationship would have to do with occupancy in the space. Under this proposal, parking requirements for an establishment. So I could, I could have how many receipts I wanted in a restaurant, as long as it didn't exceed the building far code. Totally unrelated to, totally unrelated to what parking requirement I have. The parking requirement would become a simple mathematical calculation of taking whatever the square footage is and dividing it by 300 square feet, yeah, or whichever, whichever the appropriate kind of thing is. Okay, so, so there's no relationship between the building code and the parking requirement. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So I want to be sure I understood what the proposal is, not saying it's right or wrong, or I'm not putting a value on it. Okay, now, a follow-up, so I want to be sure that I understood what the proposal was. Okay, is it, how, and this may be not a question for you, it may be a question for Joel, so I'm happy for you to pass it to him if you want to, or he may want to pass it to Les White, who knows. It would seem to me, we have the information for all the square footage in the downtown area, for all the buildings in our records. Is that correct? I would assume that's generally correct.
We do have an idea using the parking assessment district data, but it's not 100% accurate. We, I guess, could go through every building permit. We have done some benchmarking with square footage, and Monica headed that up when we looked at some issues.
Here's where, here's why I was asking. So let's assume for the moment that we had records, we have the best records we would have, and we know what the square, and we know, or we had approximation of what the square footage is, we could relatively easily then calculate, forgetting for the moment about present CUP requirements, present vested, you know, the parking districts, we could, if we were going to say, we were going to, we were going to start over from ground zero, we could figure out with, if we were going to implement this, how many parking spots we would need to have downtown. It's a mathematical calculation that I would assume wouldn't be terribly complicated to do, assuming that we had the right square footages. Then we know how many parking spaces we have in the downtown area. Is that correct? Or we know close, or whatever?
Yes.
So then we would know, we would have some understanding of what is the delta between, if I adopted this, if this were adopted by the town, and we were to wipe out everything and apply this, then we would need X number of parking spots, and we have Y number, so that if this were the standard the town was going to use, then we would have a measure, a quantifiable measure, of whether we had adequate parking, excessive parking, not very much parking, I mean, not enough parking in the town. Now, which would, would at least give us some sense of, wow, if we applied this, we might find, if we applied this, that we would be 25% short of the parking spots that we would, that we would need if we applied this, which would then help us understand, or we would be, we have excess parking, which would be one measure of helping us understand whether we have enough parking in town by some standard. Because I think while we all have our own stories about whether there's adequate parking or not in the downtown area, everybody's, my sense is, everybody, it's all anecdotal, and we don't really truly understand, as a town, either as business owners or users, whether we have enough parking, or whether we have too much park, whether we have adequate parking, whether we, how short we are, are we 50% low? So I'm not sure. So we need to figure out some way to do it. So I guess I would, a first starting point to evaluate this would be, take a run at, what if we, what if we applied this? Would it be some, would we have enough parking in downtown? Or would it be 50% short of the spaces we need? And which would be a good way to understand whether or not this would even be a viable option, because it's all hypothetical now, seems like to me.
Was that a question for staff to clarify, or more of a statement of what you think we need to be going?
It was comment. It was comment.
Okay.
After the first question to Ms. Ren.
Okay.
So, I normally or very rarely correct commissioners, but I think it's important that the statements made correctly, that with the benchmarking that you've been provided, and if we did further benchmarking, you would find that most towns and cities do not put parking and seating together. So you mentioned that we would be the only ones that would be decoupling parking and seating, and there's quite a few on there. The only two that actually have parking and seating that are coupled together are only Los Altos and Campbell. All the other ones do parking by square footage. And that's not what the intent of this was, not to decouple parking from square footage, it was to do the no seating. So there's only two on that benchmarking that I found when I went through them. And so I want to make certain that was clear, because I thought you were saying that we would be the only ones besides San Jose that doesn't have seating and parking put together.
Thank you for making that clarification, Rob. What I saw on one of the other slides that Monica had, said that it would be, it would be, there would be no parking in the equation. It would be a means to calculate seats. It actually said, you know, that council is looking for ways to calculate seats versus... So if I misunderstood what was on the slide, then fine, you know...
Seating, seating goes away with regards to parking, but you have another formula that parking is tied to square footage, which is which most jurisdictions do.
Right. And that's what I was saying in the benchmarking. I didn't see any scenario whether it was tied to seating or, or to square footage, where parking wasn't part of the equation in the ordinance. Yes.
But that's what we're...
That was what I was saying.
Yeah. But that's not what the, the draft is. The draft is to tie, restaurants will be tied to square footage, just like retail and all the other ones are tied together on a square footage basis, not on a seating basis.
Commissioner Kane, then Commissioner Hudes.
Well, I'm about to make a motion. God, I think we'd beat it to death, because again, we're simply forwarding a recommendation. And the recommendation is, in fact, everything we've been saying. And so, yes, we like what they have, but we have all these other things to say. If, if we, in fact, adopted the language in staff's recommendation, would we be putting anybody out of business? Would they have to go in and take out five tables? Do we know that? Do we know what we're doing? If we adopt this instead of what we have, do we do harm to anybody and their existing setup? Who said no?
Anybody that has a current CUP will still stay in effect. You couldn't go, a requirement that's less. If you already have in your CUP how many seats you're allowed under that CUP, you vested that amount, and so you couldn't go down from that if somehow the calculation from a square footage standpoint now, the example is it's 300 square feet per parking space, we're not going to recalculate that.
So they'd be, they'd be grandfathered.
Yeah.
They'd be red circled.
Yes.
Do we know, now we know that it doesn't hurt anybody. Do we know if we adopt these new numbers, would that restrict vitality or more businesses in town?
I don't know which new numbers you're speaking of adopting.
Your proposal.
The proposal is the fire occupancy in the amendment.
What? It's not the one I'm looking at.
Right.
Okay.
The proposal is to decouple seats from parking and to remain silent on the seating capacity as we would with any retailer in town.
What you have are, are square foot relations to seats.
Those are options for you to discuss?
But it's your recommendation.
The recommendation attached is the amendment to the town code?
Right.
And, and what that, what that does is if a new building comes in, if Yogurt You Love comes in, and it's a restaurant, they only have to provide parking by the square footage. And how many seats they put in there are now regulated by the fire code. And seating would not be a requirement from under the CUP. As opposed when Yogurt You Love came in, they had three parking spaces, or when, I can't remember the number, and so they were not, that's why when you go in, Yogurt Love is a good example, I think, which brought this up, is there's no seating in Yogurt Love, because they couldn't, they had one little table, even though they probably could put two more and handle that fine. So people can't sit in there, because they are coupled seating with parking.
So with the understanding that we are red circling, grandfathering any existing businesses, and that it's your recommendation interpretation, that these new words will not restrict vitality, and will either maintain it and prove it, then I would make the mo, and if in fact that's a fact, then I would make a motion that we send to Town Council a recommendation for adoption of the amendments to Section 29...
Hold on, Rob's over here waving.
I want to make certain, though, that the, they're less restrictive, obviously. And all of your comments are very important in the public made about the traffic issues or impacts, and those are, are still the unknowns that you've all talked about on this, and whether there's more information known. But certainly as to whether this affects current established businesses, no, it will have no effect on them. It, it might allow them to have more seats, but it's not going to allow them to come in and not have less. And with new businesses that became restaurants, it certainly is less restrictive on the amount of seats that they can have than under the current seating requirements.
And that's council's intent, to clarify and to improve the business district and its vitality. So for that reason...
That's the second time I've heard that. I don't understand. This is staff's proposal. It doesn't have fire occupancy on it.
So to clarify, is fire code one parking space for 300 square feet? Because I, he's reading...
Fire code is not one parking space for 300 square feet.
So he's reading this.
So that's for the parking. We're talking about seats. Seats would be determined based on fire occupancy.
And that's what you got, one seat per...
15 square feet.
One seat per 15 square feet.
Correct.
So that's 67 seats per 1,000 square feet.
That is possible.
That's what your motion is? You want to do that?
No, I want to adopt this language.
How about Commissioner O'Donnell, we let him finish his motion? I know, but let's do that. Let's follow procedure. I'd like you to please finish your motion, and then we're going to open up for questions and discussion.
Follow procedure, radical. All right. I recommend we send to council a recommendation for adoption of the revisions as provided by staff to Section 29 dot 10 dot 150, number of off-street spaces required. I find there's no possibility this project will have a significant impact on the environment. Therefore, the project is not subjected to sequence. I make the required finding that the town code zoning regulation amendments are consistent with the general plan, and recommend to forward a recommendation to Town Council for adoption of the amendments as provided in the staff report. Do I have a second?
Do we have a second? Or any questions, comments concerning the motion? Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner O'Donnell, and then Commissioner Hudes.
I just had a question. So getting to the actual text that was proposed in, I don't know what page it is, page three. There's the aspect of changing from seating to square feet. But there's also, in this proposal, saying that the same standard would be applied to retail and restaurants and bars and taverns. Now, that's a pretty different approach than what we were seeing in, in some of the benchmarking that was done, to align the same square footage standard. And then even in the testimony that we had, that, that retail wouldn't normally have as much need for parking as a restaurant would. So I, in going forward, I just wanted to make sure that, that we were all looking at the same thing, because there's two changes in direction in here. One is the change in, from seats to square feet, and the other one is to align the standard relative to all retail. And I'm not sure if that's what is the right thing to do or not, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Two things are being done. One isn't readily apparent. The decoupling means we no longer worry about the seats, because the fire code operates whether we do anything or not. The fire code is the fire code, and the fire code says one seat per 15 square feet. So that's vast change from what we presently have, vast change. The motion says, let's do that. The other thing it does, is it does impose square footage for purposes, for a different purpose. So I think what we can, what I had really had trouble trying to find here, was there's no mention of the decoupling in the motion, I don't think. But the motion implicitly is that we decouple, and then 29 10 150 talks about the number of off-street, off-street spaces required, not the number of seats. So you could have a 1,000-square-foot restaurant with room for, I guess, 67 people in there. Is that right? Okay.
That's correct.
So that's, you know, an order of magnitude greater than we presently have. So I just want to make sure the maker of the motion is aware of that.
I'm going to let Commissioner Kane respond to that comment, but then we are going to Commissioner Hudes, okay?
Yeah. Commissioner O'Donnell, I don't, I don't immediately see the downside insofar as water will seek its own level. We've had two or three restaurateurs tell us, I'm not going to crowd my people sitting shoulder to shoulder. So the kind of place you go to will determine the seating. And that will allow people with lower margins and lower prices to do as well as people with higher prices. And you get a steak in one place, not like the steak in another. You get a table in one place, not going to be like a table in another. No, no self-respecting restaurateur is going to put in 1,000 tables and nobody's going to go. Yogi Berra said, if they don't want to come out, you can't make them. I mean...
Commissioner.
I had a question about what's on page three, Section 29 10 150, item, paragraph sub 1 and 9.
Can I ask a question? Is this, is this related to the motion?
It is.
Okay.
And in, the question is, is that changing the parking spaces for, that are required for restaurants, bars, and taverns, and nightclubs over the existing code?
Yes. So currently, those are regulated based on seats.
So my question would be, how do we know that there is no traffic impact or other economic impact, since that change is included in there?
So we don't have the economic impact, and so obviously the economic impact would be the benefit of potentially additional revenue if there are additional seats added. Traffic for downtown, generally those are multi-stop. They're looked at from a traffic perspective, and, you know, similar to shopping centers, they accommodate a traffic number that has a wide range of uses, from retail to restaurant to personal service. So those, those are assumed to be included. And if that's some additional clarification that, as this moves forward to council, that you want provided to council, that that could be part of the direction.
Yeah. Given that response that, that it will have an impact, then I'm very concerned about choosing that number tonight without understanding the impact that it's going to have. And with the quick analysis that I did earlier, that it looked like the benchmarks were 109 square feet per parking space, and this is 300 per parking space, I'm, I'm concerned about choosing that number. I would have difficulty in supporting the motion for that reason.
And so depending on, A, if we get a second to the motion, I think that is definitely, if the number is something that's concerned for the commissioners, then that, another number could be used. And so what would happen in that case is we would pull restaurants, bars, taverns, nightclubs out of the existing retail component, create a new retail component that had some other number from a square footage standpoint. And that's part of the reasoning for the numbers provided up on the chart of the, you know, we showed you one per 15, one per 25, one per 40, one per 75, and one per 100. Once you get up to one per 75 and one per 100, you're basically in the same range of what we require currently. So that's just for the commission's information.
So you, so, and this is where I thought the conversation would be going. So, for example, I think it was said earlier, if it was one parking space per 100 square feet as opposed to 300 square feet, you're almost getting the exact same parking spaces for the amount of seats that are, are there. So...
Okay. So we've discussed the motion, but do we have a second? If we do not have a second, my understanding is the motion dies. Can I ask my fellow commissioners a question? This is a very multifaceted topic, that while I understand that we're only being asked to send a recommendation to council, I'm hearing a lot of lack of comfort in that. Is this an item that we would want to discuss having a study session? Which potentially we could ask then some of the information that Commissioner Erickson brought up, Commissioner O'Donnell, hold on, Commissioner O'Donnell. Ms. Cantada asked for. Perhaps we could request a bit more information for the study session to utilize for our recommendation. Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Hudes, then Commissioner Hanson.
I agree with you. I feel reasonably confused by what we're doing. But I will tell you this, if one were to make a motion, I'd make sure it's one seat per under square feet, which is essentially the same thing we do today. Now, if that has a different implication, I don't know it, and therefore I think the study session's in order anyway. But I certainly don't see any reason to have one seat per 15 square feet. So, yes, on the study session, failing a study session, I would think we could entertain a motion for the one seat per 100 square feet, which seems to satisfy staff somehow.
Okay. Just real quickly, Vice Chair, do you agree with the study session?
I support the study session.
Okay. Commissioner.
Yeah, I support the study session, but for me, it would be more valuable to do that if we understood how, how, how it would be coupled with a plan to enforce and implement whatever we come up with. So I would be much more comfortable if that were also presented to us.
Okay. Commissioner Hanson.
And I was going to say, conceptually, I think the, moving from the seats to the square footage approach is, is something that makes sense, but I think more analysis needs to be done to come up with the right numbers. And I, I agree with Commissioner Hudes' point as well, that, you know, that at least the consideration of enforcement has to be in it if we're, you know, going to go down this path.
So if that said, Joel, sorry, Mr. Paulson, we would then really not be forwarding any sort of recommendation at this time, or will it be a continuance to a study?
We'd continue to a study session if that's the desire of the commission.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Erickson.
So I, here's my reaction to the study session. So regardless whether we have a study session or another commission meeting, I'm, I'm not sure we need a study session. If we could continue it to a future meeting, we could probably accomplish the same thing without going to a study session and then coming back to another meeting. We'd end up having two meetings. But regardless, that issue, I could go either way. I think I would ask Ms. Ren and Mr. Paulson, if you've heard what the concerns are, both from the commissions tonight, whether we come back to a study session, or whether we just continue it to another meeting, could you focus us on the, I don't know what the number is, half a dozen questions that we really need to focus on? So, you know, as an example, Mr. Schultz suggested, we, he was surprised we weren't talking about the 300 number versus 200 number. Can you focus us on what the key issues are? You've heard concerns from people, so that we aren't wandering in the wilderness a bit, but that we can sharpen both our, we can sharpen our deliberations, and that you can sharpen the information that you provide to us, so that we could help expedite this, and then also do that in a, do that in a, in a, in a timeframe at which it's more, it's available to the public earlier than Friday, prior to, to a Wednesday meeting, so that they know what those key issues or key questions are, and they have enough time to also think them through and comment on them, so that it would help us have greater intelligence, or at least help me. I can't, I can't... I, I can't, I, you know, I need a lot of help as a planning commissioner, so, um, so to the greater extent that I can get you to sharpen it for me, and on the key issues that we need to think about, and the more time that the interested stakeholders have to be able to comment on it, that would be ideal for me. And I think it'd actually be helpful for the council, too, to the extent that we can get those issues identified, and that we can provide reasonable comments on them, and they can, I think it would help expedite for the council, too. So that's my observation.
Commissioner Badami?
So confirm, Commissioner Erickson, you're looking for more community outreach as well, so that we could have public comment, um, rather than just the business district? Because that's what I would like to see. It affects the whole community that goes to the downtown area. Is that something that could be taken into consideration?
It definitely can be taken into consideration. Um, we can put a, you know, potentially put a half-page ad in the paper, rather than just the normal public hearing notice and the legal ads. Um, you know, the challenge gets to be, we're definitely not gonna be able to notice everybody in town.
Right, right.
You know, we can put it on What's New, um, for, before the next planning commission meeting, and, and do as much outreach as we can.
I, I think that would be helpful.
I think the other is, you know, comment is, you know, really focusing on the numbers. So if three-hundred is the wrong number, what's the right number? I think if the right number, in the majority of the commission's eyes, is a number that is close to what we have currently, which I've heard from at least one or two commissioners, then, you know, I think that's a simpler conversation. Because if we're generally just gonna change it to decouple the seats, but we're gonna use a square footage that is similar to what we currently require based on the seats, then I think that's a recommendation that could be made to the council, um, simply. And so, but we're more than willing to try to pull together additional information, um, for the commission, and try to get some further clarification on those issues.
All right. Commissioner King, well?
One more comment, and I'm, you know, the, the reason I made the motion was to, was to bust a balloon, to get something done. I know what you don't want, I have faintest idea what you do want. And the one way to get there is to actually make a proposal and see what happens to it. As far as my sacred seat of government is concerned, Commissioner O'Donnell, Sacramento uses the fire code, Simi Valley uses the fire code, Lompoc uses the fire code, and beautiful downtown Grover Beach uses the fire code. So it must be working somewhere for somebody. But I do agree with the comments, and I do agree with the square footage closer to what we currently use.
Okay, then I'm gonna make a motion, um, to continue this item to a study session, and I am recommending a study session, because this is a topic which I think is gonna take a lot of conversation, as it already has, and we have applicants still sitting out here at seven. So do we need to do this at a date certain?
And, and I'll correct another time, which I normally don't though, is, we won't call it a study session, we'll call it actually a special meeting, so you could actually make, if you're not gonna do it at your regular one, and you wanna call a special meeting 'cause you don't wanna have it with all the other business going on, we can call it a special meeting and take action on it. So you could be done in one time.
Okay, I like that. Well, I'm gonna call it a, a special meeting then, because then we can take action and not see this twice, but we're also able to expend the time. So, um, we are on January thirteenth. May I ask my fellow commissioners to, I can't see that calendar very well, but if your eyes are better than mine, um, what days, Joel, would you recommend?
Well, if we wanna do it on off-commission night, which I think is a wise choice, um, I think it almost gets us probably out, and I will look to Ms. Wren as well, um, maybe March second. It's approximately six weeks. Because we have our previous one in February, is the twenty-fourth, pulling it together by the seventeenth in a month, trying to get out the information early, I think would be challenging, um, but unless Ms. Wren has other ideas, and so...
I think the second is...
To me, that's fine. I'd rather have all the information than rush this. Commissioner Erickson?
I'll tell you, this probably matters to any of the six commissioners, but I know I'm not gonna be in the country on March second, so...
Then it has to be March second.
Okay. That's, that's why I assumed that, I was gonna give that opportunity to the chair to say...
Commissioner Erickson, would you like us to move that then to two weeks after, so that you can join us?
I will let that be a secret vote of my fellow commissioners.
Is that acceptable? The sixteenth?
Sixteenth?
Oh, no, that's a day after a council meeting.
So is the second.
Both are.
It's up to the commission. I mean, we still need a second, so either the second or the sixteenth, um, are the two off-days in March.
I would then recommend the sixteenth. That way, we can all be here. Otherwise, we're all gonna speak for you. All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to have a, a special planning commission meeting to discuss this item. It will be held on March sixteenth at our standard time, seven PM?
Correct.
Okay. Can I have a second? Commissioner Hanson, seconds. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye passes unanimously. All right. That now moves us to item number six. Commission, conditional use permit U-15-014, requesting approval to operate a formula retail store at thirty-five North Santa Cruz Avenue, with a restaurant component in a commercial space, which is currently occupied by a retail store with a restaurant component on property zone C-2. This is APN number five-one-zero, dash four-four, dash zero-three-two. Can I have a show of hands of all the commissioners who have had a chance to visit the property? I can promise you, I'm probably there every weekend with my children. Ms. Walters, I understand you'll be giving us the staff report. Wait, I'm sorry, you had a comment?
Who, who seconded that last motion?
Commissioner Hanson.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Ms. Walters?
Yes, hello. Good evening, planning commissioners. Um, the applicant, Lolly and Pops, is requesting to operate a formula retail candy business with a gelato service on property zoned C-two. In the C-two zone, as we heard tonight, a conditional use permit is required for both formula retail use of any size, and also for restaurant use. Uh, the previous tenant in the nineteen-hundred-square-foot tenant space was Powell's Sweet Shop, and Powell's has since closed their shop last week. And I apologize for not including that in the report, I just found that news out as well. Um, the proposed business would occupy, um, a space that was not previously occupied by a formula retail use. As in two thousand and six, when Powell's opened, there were only three other Powell's at, um, stores during that time. And in December of two thousand and six, uh, there was a CUP, uh, approved for the tenant space to allow a component of re, uh, restaurant use to sell gelato. The proposed use would be the eleventh formula, uh, retail business in sub-area B, and that map can be found in exhibit B. The applicant, it will be selling bulk candy, prepackaged foods, sorry, prepackaged candy, handmade truffles, and will be also serving gelatos similar to, similar to the, uh, previous Powell's use. The proposed restaurant-use gelato service would be limited to approximately twelve square feet. Proposed hours are ten AM to, um, ten PM daily, and this concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Commissioner Hanson?
Did I read right in the report also that, that what, what's left of Powell's is being merged into this Lolly and Pops?
So, um, actually, the, um, Lolly and Pops is the, um, franchisor, and, um, they merged in two thousand and fourteen, and so, um, Powell's Sweet Shop is a franchisee, and, um, Lolly and Pops is the franchisor.
Okay.
So they would, they're coming in as, um, just applying for formula, uh, retail for candy with, uh, with gelato service.
Right. And because they also have, uh, more locations than Powell's ever did. And then there's also the issue with the gelato, too.
Right. And they, um, have more shops, uh, when Powell's went in in two thousand and six, there wasn't, uh, there were only three shops, so it didn't, uh, qualify as a formula retail.
And if, if, just based on the description, um, it, I mean, it, it sounds like it's gonna be very similar to the format of Powell's in terms of the use, including the gelato and the square footage that's allocated to it. So is that a correct way to look at it?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Hudes?
Um, did, did Powell's have seating, and does the applicant, is the applicant requesting seating?
Powell's did have seating. If you remember, they had a area where you could sit and watch a movie. Um, that is no, there are no seats permitted as a part of the condition, um, the conditions of approval of this application, they don't want seats.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you. We will now call the applicant up. You will have ten minutes to, uh, address the commission. However, I, I, I think I have two cards. I think there's two of you wanting to speak. Okay, so it's your combined speaking time is ten minutes, since you're both the applicant. Is it just gonna be you?
Yeah.
Are you Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, uh, Mr. McLaughlin then? Or are you Mr. Friedman?
I'm David Friedman.
Okay.
With Lolly and Pops, hi.
All right, make sure, could you state your name again in the microphone?
Sure. David Friedman, with Lolly and Pops, and Sean McLaughlin is also, will be joining.
Sean McLaughlin, senior, uh, project manager of construction for Lolly and Pops.
So I'm sure a lot of you are surprised that Powell's did close, that we are the parent company of Powell's. We're Lolly and Pops. Right now, we have twenty stores around the country, and we're based in San Francisco. It's an incredible company, incredible concept, and I brought some photos to show you. Ooh, it's dark. Each store is unique.
Bring any samples. I don't wanna see the photos.
I do have samples, if, but I didn't know if it was appropriate or not. I mean, how can you not talk about chocolates and sweets without bringing some, so? But, uh, it's, can you see the, the images? Are, are you familiar with Lolly and Pops? I don't know if you've seen any of our stores. We, this would be our very first street location in the country, and we're really excited about that. And we're excited about Los Gatos. We have, our president actually is from Los Gatos, and we...
No, she, she has another one she'll give you. Although I'm not sure it's working. There we go.
Thanks. Oh. Well, this is the case. I think we're, we're a premium purveyor, so really, we're everything that Powell's is, but then a little bit more. Um, we're, we sell a lot of nostalgia, we sell bulk, just like Powell's does. We have, we're, but we're also, we're doing this in a much more premium, uh, experience. And you can see by the store, it's cleaner, it's, um, there's still a lot to discover in our stores. Um, so we have, we really source the same merchandise that Powell, Powell's does, we supply Powell's with all their product. So we're gonna have the same assortment, but then we're also gonna have some new assortment, assortments with some, some really elegant truffles, with incredible chocolates from all over the world. We source locally as well, and we do carry local artisan from each community that we're in. Uh, this is a truffle bar, some of the packaging. It's still primarily personal consumption, so really, about ninety percent of our business is just personal consumption. Um, it's, which is amazing, and our average ticket's only about twelve dollars. So we're selling to a lot of people go through our stores, and they, they, it's something you can't do on the internet. You know, you can't just go on the internet and grab some candy and eat it. So people, this is a completely experiential, a little, almost a little bit like Disneyland, too. This is, our employees dress up in a crisp white Oxford shirt, wear a bowtie. So it's the old-fashioned candy store experience, but just updated a little bit. Um, you can see even by the chalk art on the back there, this is from The Woodlands, Texas. So we try to really embrace the communities we're in. Um, we're mostly in regional malls right now, and again, I think with, uh, with the, the way the world is going, with the internet impacting especially regional malls, our goal is to, to really reach out to smaller towns and, and drive traffic and, and do some, do some business in these types of communities. Um, we, we do a lot with apothecary jars for our bulk. Again, this is one that's in Seattle. Uh, chocolates from all over the world. And you can tell, this is an international room where we carry product from, again, from all over the world. We have vintage areas, and a different chocolate library. We have incredible gummies, really. They're natural, they're, um, produ, most of, most of the gummies we have are from Indiana, a small manufacturer, and they're, and they're just delicious. And that's our gummy Buddha, our big gummy bear. We also have some of our own candy bars. Uh, these are different flavors, toffee, sea salt, strawberry champagne. So we're, we're starting to package some of our own brands, but we're really good at sourcing unique candy and unique experiences. Incredible hospitality from our stores, and some of our mission statements here. Um, I think that's pretty much it. We're gonna be sourcing gelato from a local, uh, manufacturer of gelato as well, local from the South Bay. We try to, we, we really try to do things that are, that are from the area in all our stores, and we're excited to continue the tradition of having gelato in Los Gatos, but again, keeping it extremely premium and, um, and delightful. So I think that's, that's it.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna ask a question, and I'm gonna apologize if some of these questions wind up sounding like they're leaning very much on the more personal questions side, like from me, not so much the town. Have you spent a lot of time in, in Powell's recently and, and seen how Powell's functions, um, within the town?
I have, yeah.
Okay. So you don't really see, it's, it's, I think it pretty quickly became an iconic store in our town.
Definitely, definitely.
Um, it's packed on the weekends, and during the summer, nonstop. It, it's, it's somewhat become its own type of a destination store to come to. So I would assume, having been in there and, and seen how that store functions, you're gonna work hard to somewhat mimic what the town has grown to love, and what is packed constantly.
It's, it's true. It's actually our concept, too. So we, we're the, we're the same. You know, we, and so we learned a lot from Powell's when, when we acquired them. We only had three stores when we acquired Powell's, and they had fourteen stores. So we've learned a lot from Powell's, and then we've just taken the experience and we're, we're refreshing it. I guess that's the best way to, you know, polishing the gem, is another expression to think about. So it's, it's, we're, we're trying to take that experience and make it really relevant, especially in a, in a community that's high-end, that likes wonderful things, and still keep that experiential, um, but bring it into a whole, kind of a whole new, new area. So we're, we're hoping to, um, to actually increase sales here, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Hudes and Commissioner Erickson?
Um, your customers, are they mostly residents or non-residents?
Um, for Powell's?
Yes, and what you anticipate for any changes in, uh, in the future with Lolly Pops?
We're, we're anticipating it to be very supported by the local community, and for us to be involved in the local community as well. But we're, um, we do see this as being quite a draw from, you know, it'll be the, it would be the first street store in, in the Bay Area. We don't, currently don't have any stores in San, in the Bay Area. Our closest store is actually in Roseville, so this would be the first store. So I think it's, it's exciting to, um, so it probably would draw, you know, it might draw from a larger area.
Thank you.
Commissioner Erickson?
So, um, the type of store that is described in your, in Mr. McLaughlin's letter of October twenty-seventh, there's a description in paragraph two, would have a unique place in this town. When I read that paragraph, there is no mention of gelato or beverages in that paragraph. So a, a couple of questions, and because if I, if I look at, but both you've declared that you wanna sell gelato in the store, and if I looked at the drawings carefully, it, it appears that there are two, uh, cases that would have soda or beverages, types of beverages in them. So my, I have a, I'll ask you two or three questions, you can answer them.
Sure.
Because they're all related to each other. So of the twenty locations that you have, and I don't know whether you have the twenty-first or yet or not, because you said we'll open for...
Right, we have, we have twenty current... Right, we have, we have 20 current open locations plus one kiosk in a transit center.
So, in all of those locations, do you also have gelato and do you also have beverages is part of a question? And then how critical are those two things, which in and of themselves are not unique to this town? Where the, where the rest of what it is and may or may not, if I read the description of what you're saying, may or may not be necessary, if you would, for creating the kind of ambience and kind of market niche that you're talking about? So, can you help me understand how gelato and beverages fit into the business plan and how critical they are and how is that typical? Because it's not something one would conclude from reading that second paragraph in Mr. McLaughlin's letter of October 27th that you would have in the store.
Good question. So, right now in our stores, we do carry soda pop in every one of our stores and it's a substantial amount of business for our stores. And with gelato, this would be the very first store that Lolly and Pops has that sells gelato. However, with Powell's, the experience, it's, it's a pretty substantial, it's a good part of their business where it's enough, if we don't have that, then it, we want to make sure we continue the sales and the traffic and we want to continue the, the marketing that we've done, that we've built so well with Powell's. And then second, we're, we're working, because this is a street location and especially when it gets hot, and I know it gets hot in Los Gatos, we want to be able to offer the customer something that cools them down. And so, this is for street locations and outdoor locations, we think that this is, it's worked so well for Powell's that we want to continue that tradition.
Okay.
Okay. But then, just to be clear, so this would be the first, the first and only store of Lolly and Pops that has gelato in it?
It's true. Be the first-
Okay.
But we also own Powell's as well, so we have gelato in Powell's.
Right. And then, do you have soda in, in your other stores?
Yes, in Powell's.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? No? Well, normally, we have other members of the public come up and speak and then you get another five minutes to address anything that came up. So, that said, do you have any additional comments that you'd like to make to the commission before we close the public portion?
No, just emphasizing again that it's just something that we're wanting to take what's so special about Powell's and just complete the experience for the next generation, for the next 10 years, next 20 years. This is the goal for our company and, and we've, we're excited to be hopefully a part of Los Gatos in doing this. This is, it's, it's really big for, for all of our company, for, and I think for Los Gatos, you're going to just, you will just love it. It's perfect for this market.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? No? All right, I'm going to close the public portion. I think Ms. Walters can take that microphone back from you.
Okay, great, thanks.
And ask my fellow commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, want to make a motion? Commissioner Erickson?
I have a question for Ms. Walters. So, since I'm still learning how to be a planning commissioner, I want to be sure I understand correctly. So, when I, when I look at the conditions of approval, the approved use says, the approved use is for a retailer, a formula retail store in conjunction with the sale of gelato without commercial cooking, blah, 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 blah. So, that would mean, since the, since a, a conditional use permit would go with the land, that I could, that in the future, I could have some other type of retail establishment in that space, not selling candy. I'm not presuming that they would go out of business or that they would relocate, but I could, with, with this conditional use permit, so I could have some other retail use and sell gelato. So, I could sell cigars or, or toys or something and sell gelato. Is that correct? Without, under this conditional, under this CUP with these conditional, with these conditions of approval? There's no limitation on the fact that they have to sell candy or sweets?
That is correct and it would be limited to this, based on the floor plan that was approved.
Right. So, the, the only limitation is they couldn't, if I were going to open a toy store and sell gelato in my toy store, I couldn't have more than, I think it's 12 square footage. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Does anyone want to venture a motion? Commissioner Kane?
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval in Exhibit 3. I find the proposed project is categorically exempt pursuant to the adopted guidelines for the implementation of CEQA. I make the required findings as requested, as required by Section 292190 of the Town Code for granting a CUP. I make the required findings as required by Section 4B of the redevelopment plan for the Central Los Gatos Redevelopment Project, that it meets its uses set forth in the town's general plan. And I approve conditional use permit application with, I said that already. So, those three. Can I get a second this time?
Oh, we, well, look, we have people competing. Commissioner Erickson?
I'd like to second it with a proposed amendment to the motion, to the maker of the motion.
Okay.
To end the conditions of approval number four, to strike in the first sentence, "in conjunction with the sale of gelato without commercial cooking facilities or equipment." My reason for doing that is I don't see that as part of what they're, critical to their business and it's not unique to the, to the town. There are plenty of other places to get gelato in the town and if they are purveyors of sweetness, that should be sufficient for them to survive. So, I would want to ask the maker of the motion to accept that amendment and if so, I would second it.
Is, let me be clear, you want to eliminate the gelato?
That's correct.
I wouldn't find that acceptable.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So, it passes five to one, sorry. Are there any appeal rights for this, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal that decision to the town council. The appeal forms are available in the clerk's office. There's a fee for filing the appeal and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
If you guys don't mind, we're going to take a two-minute break and we'll be right back. All right, everybody. Our portion of the hearing for the planning commission meeting, thank you for letting us take a quick break. We are now considering item number seven, Architectural and Site Application S-14-127, considering the appeal of a decision of the Development Review Committee approving an architecture and site application to demolish an existing single-family residence and to construct a new single-family residence on property zoned HR 2.5 APN number 53704-019. Can I have a show of hands of everyone that got to go to the property? Does anyone have anything? Commissioner Badami?
I'd like to make a disclosure that I did go to the property and I had incidental contact with both of the Millers as I obtained access to view the lower property that's in question.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Hudes and then Commissioner Kane?
Yeah, I also had incidental contact.
Okay, Commissioner Kane?
I was with vice commissioner, so I had the same incidental contact.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Sorry, that just, for some reason, made me laugh. Ms. Mosley, I understand you'll be giving us the staff report.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The project site is located at the southeast corner of Turney Road and Turney Loop. It is accessed through a shared driveway easement that runs along the northern border of the property. The 26,000-square-foot site is zoned HR 2.5 and is considered non-conforming to the HR zone in regards to the size. The site currently contains a 1,700-square-foot, single-story residence that was constructed in 1959. The proposed project consists of demolition of the existing single-family residence and construction of a new, single-story, 4,000-square-foot, single-story residence with a attached three-car garage. The new residence will have a slate-colored metal roof and battened board siding. The plans were reviewed by the town's consulting architect, who concluded that the proposed residence is modest in size and scale for the site and utilizes quality materials and authentic details consistent with the home's architectural style. The majority of the proposed construction would occur in the same location as the existing residence. However, the extension of the residence to the north and west would impact five of the 10 on-site trees and require their removal due to the proximity of the construction. The town's consulting arborist reviewed the initial development plans as well as the final development plans and both of those reports are included in your staff report. She concluded that the proposed tree removals were consistent with town code. And while the proposed development plans do not have a final landscaping plan, the applicant will be required to provide canopy replacement consistent with town code requirements for the trees removed. The applicant worked with staff to address inconsistencies with the issue, inconsistencies and issues with the plans as well as concerns provided by the neighbors. The application was considered by the Development Review Committee on November 18th and after receiving comments from several neighbors, staff added the additional conditions provided in your staff report and approved the project. The application was appealed on November 30th. The appellant's primary concerns are in regards to the type, color, and amount of roof that would be visible from their property, as well as maintaining the open feel of the hillside with the additional proposed fencing. Staff's analysis within the staff report discusses the appellant's concerns as staff understands them. We are here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Kane?
I have a question that may or may not be relevant, but Exhibit 5, I believe it was, there's mention of a viewing platform on the Millers' property that seats, or that's set eight feet off the ground and that it's illegal and within a setback. Is that true?
Staff doesn't have any confirmation of the height or the proximity to the, the property line, but there is a, there is an existing deck that overlooks the proposed project site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kane, did you have a question?
So, the DRC approved it on 11/18 and it was appealed.
Do we have any other questions? So then, I just want to make a quick confirmation before we begin some of our questioning or whatever we do. This meets all the hillside requirements. There are no exemptions being asked for, or exceptions, I'm sorry, being asked for or anything of the like. This is truly in front of us, just based on the appeal, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We will now open the public portion of the hearing, and I'm going to make sure that I state this, so Mr. Paulson, if I state this incorrectly. The appellant can come and speak for up to 10 minutes now, and then the appellant, sorry, and then the applicant, well, sorry, it's getting late. An additional, we'll have 10 minutes following that to address us. We will then take any public comment, and then there will be an additional, for just the appellant, there will be then a final five minutes for just the appellant. So, that confuses me, but I hope that made sense to everybody else. You have 10 minutes, then. Just please make sure when you're ready that you pull the microphone up close and you introduce yourself for the record. Okay?
Yeah. You can use this one.
Yeah, I'm gonna try this one. It might be. Good evening. My name is Steve Miller, and this is my wife, Beverly Miller. We reside at 17651 Turney Road. We also own the property. We lived there for up to 20 years. The property, our property, is the property above the project site, and we're to the south. Our property looks down across the project site into town of La Cada and also the valley And, you know, I have a series of slides that I'm gonna present. This is slide number one. What I'm trying to do with regard to the slides is show the relationship between the two parties. It'll probably take into, it'll show you some considerations that we have identified, and will also, those also were part of our appeal. Our property is colored orange, and the yellow property in the site below. First of all, I just want to note that we had a survey done in the year 2002, which is a legal description clearly defining the property lines. It involves setting the tagged iron pipes at that time and having the county surveyors office sign off to its accuracy. If you note on their property, in yellow, there's, on the far upper right-hand corner, there's orange that goes around the property and out to Turney Road. As was mentioned, that is part of a mutual ingress and egress easement. Now, the reason that you're showing this slide is that we think that the developers on the site below have not lived there and are probably under the mistaken that they own all the land below us and that we just have an easement for that. That's not true. If you go back, well, if you were to, if you were to look at the letter that they sent to planning, their project proposes and assumes that they have carte blanche to act unilaterally on that piece of, on that 10-foot, 20-foot strip. We are proposed, we are prepared, if you will, to grant the authority with certain restrictions, with certain reasonable conditions on the project. So, the next slide that I want to put up is, fine, yeah? Okay. It's just, that is a little confusing, that one.
So, if you do step away from the podium, you can just take the microphone with you so that we can hear everything you say.
Oh, okay. Fine.
No problem.
So, this is merely just reversing the first slide by 180 degrees, because if, on the other one, it had one property on the south and the other one on the north, and we're actually south of their, we're actually south of their property, sorry. So, that is slide number two. I want to move now quickly to slide number three, in the interest of time. The next slide that I'm gonna put up, I call this "The Road Issue." Again, our property is orange and theirs is yellow. South is at the top. This is the actual copy of their site plan, which shows a 20-foot ingress/egress easement area, which is shown in orange and yellow. We each own 10 feet of this easement, and it is mutually dedicated to the other party and also for use by another home, the bottom, which is in the north. That, that area, the area within this easement is shown crosshatched in black. It shows the road and the shared driveway to both of our properties and to the one other neighbor, which is to the north. The applicant, the applicant plans to use this driveway and the adjacent easement area during the course of construction over the next 12 months or so in a number of various ways. One, they want to access, they're gonna need access to the site for workers, material deliveries, plus parking. There will be regrading, drainage, utilities, and for the installation of a final driveway, together with a curb designed for the access to their house. Because we own a portion of this property, we have exposure. We need and are requesting legal protection by means of a defense and hold harmless agreement executed by all the owners for accidents, injuries, wrongful death, loss, et cetera, that might occur during the course of the construction, via, via to the developers, their contractors, subcontractors, employees, or anyone else on the site. We also need and request a performance and materialment warranty that the improvements made on or under the shared driveway, so that we are not stuck with a big bill in the event that there might be failure to complete the project or due to poor workmanship. According to their letter, they've indicated they plan to use a reputable contractor. We think that's great, so we personally don't think they would have a problem in doing something like that on our behalf, as well as the other neighbor. There's also, I just want to note, there's also a similar boilerplate, and I'm not sure of the number, but it's called, it's referred to as indemnity agreement to protect the town during this project. So, our question is, why not us? You're being indemnified. We would, we'd like the same thing for our protection. We, ultimately, we understand this is a civil matter between the neighbors, but I think a suggestion to the developers from the Planning Commission would really help to expedite and clear the air in allowing this project to proceed. I think that, we think that's really important, to get your benefit because of the fact we know you can't get involved with civil matters. My next slide, which is in the appeal, is with regard to the fence issue. So, when you look at this, this slide, again, we are orange and they are yellow, and the existing fence is in green at the top. They propose placing a six-foot solid fence adjacent to the south property line, where the yellow and the orange lines are at the top of this page. We believe this is contrary to the hillside guidelines, which promotes open fencing. Currently, there are no solid wood fences in the immediate surrounding area. Their everyday view, when you, when you look at that, does not look, won't be looking at a fence, but ours would. Until this is resolved, we do not know what to do with our existing fence. We need a recommendation from the Planning Commission as to what should be done so we can coordinate the construction of a final fence and/or the relocation of the existing fence, which we own. We are prepared to pay for that removal. We want to achieve this without losing our dogs to coyotes or providing grazing for the deer of what's left of our plants due to the current drought. My final slide, my final slide is what I refer to as a view easement. Again, we are orange, they are yellow, and the existing, whoops, sorry. Sorry, the view easement. Other than the liabilities over injuries or damage to our land, this is really the main issue. Their marketing literature of a couple of months describes their future house as having beautiful views of the valley. We have them too and hope to retain them. It is why we had concerns originally with, over the house height, which is now probably okay. The roof color, their current plan talks about a dark gray, which we do not like, rather than the dark taupe, which they originally had in their coverbo, their colorboard on file, but we think we can live with that. And finally, the proposed solid wood fence, which we would like the Planning Commission's input on. A condition states that they will plant on the rear slope of their property, which is the front of ours, only bushes and shrubs, which will mature to no more than 12 feet. In a meeting with one of the developers and his wife, she brought up the idea of a deed restriction and a view easement. We latched onto this. It would solve our problems with any future buyer of their property, but later they reneged on us. In a letter to the planning, one of the developers of the property suggested that they would give us a view easement if we would relinquish our ingress and egress easement across their land. So, they have been open to a trade. Unfortunately, we own that land, so it's not possible. We are prepared to grant carte blanche authority to the developers to improve, modify, grade, pave, place curbs, drainage utilities across a portion of our land, but in order for this to happen, that's only if we are indemnified and the work is done well. A view easement is not unreasonable reciprocity for the flexibility and the freedom to act. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you for the presentation. That was lots of thorough information. I, I was just trying to piece together, because there was a lot of communication back and forth between you and the applicant.
Yes.
Of the issues that you identified, in your appeal, the, the two issues that were mentioned were the, the fence and then the roof. And I didn't see the, the deed issue in the appeal, or maybe I just didn't.
I'm sorry, the what? The deed?
You were talking about the, the deed.
You mean the indemnification?
The indemnification, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, that was, I mean, they had, you know, in their project, they, you know, there's gonna be construction on that road. The problem is, we own 10 feet of that, so that, there's an ingress and egress, but we own 10 of it. So, we're asking, all we're asking for with regard to that, it came up later, is we want to be indemnified. We need to be protected, because in the case of an accident, I mean, we could be sued. We're really nervous about being sued.
I totally understand. My question is, there's the two items in the appeal, between the two items in the appeal and then this additional issue with the indemnification, how many, which of those issues have already been discussed with the applicant and haven't gotten?
We have, I don't, I couldn't give you the date of the last meeting that we had with the applicant at our house. We had a discussion with regard to several issues, one of them being the color of the roof. Their current plan calls out a dark gray. Originally, it was a taupe, if you will, and so there was a lot of discussion at our house regarding that. And although we were under the impression that they might be able to commit to the taupe, we did hear back afterwards that, that they have a partner, and the partner was not willing to concede that, so they had to drop what we thought might be consideration. We're okay with the dark gray, if that's what it has to be, but we would prefer the dark taupe, which they originally proposed, and is, excuse me, is on the colorboard in the town.
So.
On that, so, I mean, we're willing to live with it, but it isn't what they had originally suggested.
So, so what, what is your, you know, deal color that you can't live without, you know?
We don't, I mean, I suspect that's the color. I don't know. Isn't this their project?
That's what I was, I guess we'll hear from the applicant, but I'm just trying to understand what you, what you want and what, and what, and what conversation.
So, okay, to answer specifically, we do not have an issue with the color of the roof, okay? We're not happy with it, but we can live with it.
Okay. So, so that's not a deal killer in your field?
That is not a deal killer.
In your.
We are really concerned, one, about the six-foot solid wood fence. We think that impacts us more than them. Because as, well, I don't, you know, if you, if you look at that again, we look down to that fence, they do not. They look outward, if you will, north. So, the fence, you know, is gonna be up in that area. What I mentioned, I think, in, in the, the appeal was the fact, my concern was, I needed clarification from the town, because I think it's, I think it's item number 41 or 46 in a town condition that states that the, the new fence has to be put on the property line. My question with regard to that was, is, who determines whose fence should be on that property line? If we wish to maintain our existing open fence, and they insist on having a six-foot wood solid fence, there has to be a decision made, who can actually put their fence on the property. I had to discuss them with the engineering department. I was told, well, that's really boilerplate. It's in every, you know, town's boilerplate, but don't worry, essentially, don't worry about it. But I was trying to get clarification on that, and that's why it's in the appeal.
Okay. So, so getting back to, to turn this, net it out, that your, your main deal killer issue is, in fact, the fence?
The fence, and we.
And then, and this indemnification?
The indemnification. What I said with regard to the indemnification, one, they're required by the town to put a curb in along the, along the perimeter of that 12, sorry, 20-foot easement, ingress and egress. We're okay with that. We own that. So, we're, you know, we're gonna abide with what the towns ask them to do, but we're asking for indemnification.
Okay. All right. Well, you answered.
And so, what we were, said, well, if we're willing to do that, we're, you know, we would like them to consider giving us a view easement, and that's what I mentioned in here, in, as a trade, a fair trade for that.
Okay. Well, good. That answered my questions. Thank you.
Okay. Were there any other questions?
Commissioner Badami?
Hi.
Hi. So, if we could work on this fence issue, you know, we'll have to talk to the applicant as well, but if we could determine having two cohabitating fences, so that you each have a fence, would that be something you would be amenable to, and we would work on where the fences would be located if one is going to be on a property line?
Yes. When I met with the, the engineering department, I guess it was the engineering department, I had suggested, you know, I sat there in a meeting, I said, well, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me. I don't see how you can, you know, require us to do that. I would, you know, I propose a setback. I don't know what that setback should be, you know, if, you know, six inches or a foot, I'm okay with either one. Our position is, we think there should, you know, if they're gonna have a solid, our fence has been there for 20 years, we would like to continue to have our fence. We're okay if they want to put a fence on their side. We're not happy with the fact that it's a solid wood fence, you know, as I mentioned, you know, per the hillside guidelines. No one in that area has a wood fence.
I understand that, but I must point out to you that you have a chain link fence, and that's also strongly discouraged by the hillside design.
So, I understand that, too, and if you go up Turney Road, which I'm sure you did, if you look at every fence, you know, I can, I can, I actually have pictures, I can show you where there are six or seven homes. Everyone has a chain link fence.
Thank you.
I'm not saying it's, you know, it's correct, but that's what everyone has.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Just for the sake of continued conversation, I just do want to remind everybody that the idea with the, the easement is a civil issue, and we have no legal standing on that at all. So, just to remind everyone, we've been here before, but, and so, any other questions? No? Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, now we will call the applicant up. You will have 10 minutes to speak. Same applies. Please pull the microphone close to you and introduce yourself.
I'm one of the owners of the property. It's owned by two couples. It's held in an LLC. I'm the manager of that LLC. We've worked with the Millers for 18 months. We've been going on this project, and I have a whole list of things trying to recap, and maybe you've read some of that, of all the different things that we've done to try to appease them. Kind of waiting to hear what they brought us all here for tonight. I want to address those things directly instead, and then I'll turn it over to Beth. The first thing is the fence. It sounds like their fence, which is currently built on, partially on our property, as their slides. slide showed, we don't really have a problem with that. We can build our fence at the property line or slightly inside it. That's fine. It's a privacy issue for us. They do have an illegal platform, and during your visit up there, you probably saw it, it's very invasive, especially to, you know, we've had some renters there, and you literally look right down into the house. So, we feel like we need that, we need that protection for privacy reasons. The other piece is the easement that they brought up, the civil matter I won't get into, but the easement, the road that they're referring to is a secondary access of their property that years ago, that was originally granted for being the only access to their property, and now they got new access on the other side, which they have a gated entry, and that is a, kind of a weed-covered old easement that they have been clear that they do use periodically. So, when they brought up a view easement as, to protect their view, I thought that would be a pretty, you know, a good swap, and they weren't open to that, because they were very concerned about their view, and Beth will show you, and we have a lot of detail on how we've lowered that and tried to lessen the impact of the view. The roof color, it seems like they're fine with. And that's it. I mean, I'm not going to go over my...
Turn it over to you. Hi, Beth Worsoma, Studio 3. Good to see you guys again. I'll be at late. One of these days, I'll be number one on the agenda. Whew. All right. As per usual, with how the process has gone, new issues have come up today that haven't been in existence before, and trade-ins and outs have happened in different requests, et cetera. So it's a bit confusing, but let's just go through the process that my client's been through for the past year and a half. As you know, the subject property is this kind of funky-shaped property up on Turney Road. I'd like to point out that, let's see, this is our property right here, and this is the Miller's property right here. This is their primary entrance, and the little road easement that's come up today is this little kind of backside secondary area. Current existing site photos, you guys have been there, you've seen it. The encroaching deck that sits inside the setback, this is the piece we're talking about. We do see this as an encroachment and a privacy issue for us. One of the reasons we do want a more solid fence at that back property line, especially in light of the process that we've gone through. A little bit on the surrounding neighborhood. We won't go into how their fences, colors, architecture really is not really part of the Hillside Design Guidelines, but this is what we're dealing with up there as neighbors. Again, our proposed site plan, the blue outline is where our existing footprint is, the orange or red outline, how it looks on here, is our proposed. As you heard from Marnie, we are in compliance with how the house is sited, the architecture of the overall home, floor plans, roof plan, and elevations. I'd like to point out that the current proposed house is actually only five feet taller than the existing house, and while the numbers may look like they're eight feet taller, that's because the way we have to do the math, or sorry to mention the drawings, for the planning department is to the bottom of the crawl space of a home, and not from grade or finished floor to the ridge, whereas the existing height of the current building that's there is noted from grade to the ridge. That bumps us an additional three feet over, and that's just the way that the town measures and how we have to submit drawings. So this is just kind of showing you our property. This elevation probably is the most important. This is the elevation that faces uphill to the Millers, and the one that we've worked on extensively. Our original design was a two-story proposal that did fit height-wise, et cetera, massing within the, within the Hillside Design Guidelines, but that didn't work with the Millers. After extensive revisions, we eliminated the second story, we eliminated basement options, we got rid of lighting, balconies, windows, et cetera, that faced the Millers. We changed roof pitches to further lower the building, and then, as a further measure, we've actually suggested snuggling this building two feet down into the grade, more than what the current home is. This allows us to kind of grade out and grade down, which does require us to grade more in Hillside, but does lower, oops, overall, the home. So, oh, these are so dark. I like the projector. So this is a, this is a slide of the first, first proposal we did with the two-story. You can see, kind of, we had this back area and a balcony. I'd like you to really note that this line right here, this is the existing chain link fence that the Millers have. So really, a large portion of this home is already blocked in view by that. So we started in 2014. We did multiple revisions, lowering it, so again, you're seeing it lowered. And then our final on the right, you can see that we've lowered that roof. You can't even see the gable on the back, should planting grow up on their chain link fences. I'd also like you to pay attention to the fact that we've maintained their view. Actually, in all these, I think, we've maintained their view, but we've expressly maintained their view with our current proposal, which generally speaking, when we've met with the Millers, has been the primary issue. So, most of our moves have been to accommodate that for them. This is just a rundown of how we meet the design guidelines, but I don't think we need to go into detail on that, because we do have Cannon Group and the planning department's approval on Hillside Design Guidelines, and we're not asking for any exceptions within that. I'm not sure if you guys saw story polls or not, but as a reminder, we're really only about five feet higher than the existing ridge of the home, even though we have a bigger footprint. That has to do with all the, all the things that we've done to accommodate shifting this house further down. Materials palette, and we are proposing a metal roof, the board and batten, a combination of stone, metal clad windows, which are typical. We are required to meet the LRV requirements. We do have a roofing sample over there. You can note on our original, our original 11 by 17 proposal, we did suggest a charcoal gray roof. The sample that we have there is more of a brown, but that's the sample that we could get from the, from the roofing company. The charcoal gray is a special order, so. Regarding the fence, so we are proposing an open fence that works with the Hillside Design Guidelines on all property sides, with the exception of the back property line that shares the Millers. And that's where we'd like to do a wood fence that is six feet high. We are proposing keeping it with some little bit of transparency and being able to plant on it, but not a solid, typical kind of redwood fence. This has to do with just making sure that we can maintain some privacy from the Millers onto the property. It should also be noted that the homeowners have provided planting for the Millers. I don't know what kind, or whatever, you can kind of speak to that, I guess. And we've actually even moved it onto their property so that they can maintain the height that they want those to go. There's lots of accommodations that have been made all along to kind of protect their view and privacy. Per our tech review, we also, this is just a quick rendering. Per our tech review, we did accommodate a bunch of other neighbor concerns. Most of the neighbor concerns that had to do with the road or kind of construction. And so, as you know, the town requires us to do a construction management plan, and of course, we will abide by that. Once the neighbors, who are all listed here, who had initial concerns, understood that from our tech review process, because these people did come, they all were fine with the project and sent letters stating such. Let's see. It's just a rundown of kind of all the things that we just talked about, all the accommodations and exceptions, et cetera, that we've made for the Millers along the way, over the past year, year and a half. And then, just a reminder, just a reminder that this is, this is what we're talking about right here. This is going to be covered by that fence line. This is a rendering of the current proposed roof. So really, they see very little of it. This picture was taken from their backyard. Like we said, we've made many accommodations and many meetings with them to accommodate their view concern. You can see, we've really maintained that. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Hanson?
I was just curious about the roof color myself. I know in the Hillside Design Guidelines, there's the LRV issue, but I was just wondering how charcoal gray blends with the vegetation in the hillside.
Well, I think charcoal gray is considered, or slate gray, kind of a warm gray, is considered a natural material, does blend with shadow, rocks, stone, stone materials that are consistently used on buildings. And so, I know that the planning department views it as a, an acceptable color that does blend with hillside as well. It's not like a, you know, a red roof, or a green roof, or a blue roof, or a pink roof, or...
I agree. It's not, it's not, it's not far off, but I mean, but, you know, it's not in the earth tones.
I mean, I think technically speaking, it is, but I guess that's probably a matter of, yeah.
Judgment, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Medved. Am I saying your last name? Can you come up? We have to be able to hear you. Something you just mentioned at the beginning, I want to just go back to and clarify. You had discussed the fence, and obviously, the question would come if the recommendation from engineering was put the fence on the property line, the question come, whose fence is it? You are willing, then, to take that fence and move it into your property, six inches to a foot? It's obviously your fence, your fence to maintain, if that winds up being an agreeable point?
That's totally fine with me.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I think the footing has to be inside.
Yeah. It does. Just for the sake of restating. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right.
I do have another card for public speaker, Joel Nelson. Mr. Nelson, you will have three minutes to address the commission. Just make sure you pull the microphone down and introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, Joel Nelson. I'm one of the neighbors of the Millers up the hillside a little bit. My, my real concerns are probably three. One is, as you're coming up the driveway, I was, I was concerned about a fence, and I heard about a solid fence, and I was thinking there would be a solid fence that would be coming up Turney Road. I think what you're telling us now is it's an open fence, and so, that, that was, yeah, that was one of my big concerns, and I think that's, that's probably not a problem. I don't think a solid fence would look good right up there. The second concern is for the neighborhood, the water company, there's a, kind of a secondary system that goes there, and we need to make sure that, I know they talked about capping it off and doing what they need to do, but if, in fact, something were to happen and we were to empty out our whole water tank, that we would want them to be responsible for the, the loss of water and filling it up and whatever fee that might be, I don't know, whatever the cost of water is expensive. So we want to make sure that that would be covered if accidentally it gets, it gets emptied because of something they do. And, you know, thirdly, I just sympathize with, they're, they're my neighbors, so I mean, I want to make sure that, you know, their view is, and I, you know, that you're, you're working on that, and it sounds like something you're working on, so, but I'm, you know, I want to be sensitive to that. So that's pretty much it with my three minutes. Fencing, I think we, and, and the water system, which is, I think is important.
Okay. Any questions? So do, I have a question. Do you, that, that access road they're talking about, do you share that?
No, no, no.
Are you the neighbor that shares that?
No, no.
Okay. All right. Thank you. No other questions? Thank you. So at this point, we give the appellant five more minutes to address the commission. And again, you need to state your name for the...
Okay. I'm still Steve Miller. I'd just like to say that, you know, we feel that we've been vilified quite a bit, you know, and he's commented about what they've done for, to assist us over the last 18 months. We have, you know, a point I want to make, that I don't think we're the only ones that had an issue with the height. And the height are, and we're okay with it now. The point being, they've had seven reiterations back to the town, because originally, they were 10 feet higher than they are now. What that tells me is, they weren't even close to 25 feet maximum. So, you know, I really have an issue with that, you know, trying to vilify us, and they did that in a letter to the town, which I'm not happy about. But anyway, that, you know, they kept saying in this letter that, you know, that they had bent over backwards to mitigate our concern. And I just want to, you know, reemphasize the fact that I think these issues about the, the original height were also the town's height, that they didn't comply with the guidelines. But we're okay with the height, that what it is now. It's not an issue, because they're now four and a half inches under the 25 foot. You know, it's taken them quite a time, quite a bit of time to get there, and it's, you know, and it's great. They've done a lot to reduce it. They've made a lot of effort on that part, and we're happy that they've done that. So that's a good thing. You know, and I just want to say that also, you know, their house, I think, is about 4295 square feet now, which is exactly five feet under the allowable 4,300 square foot far. Okay? That's great. I mean, originally, I think their plan that they submitted to the town was an excess of 5,000 feet. We never questioned that. The town pushed back on that. They talk about going from a two-story to a one-story. That wasn't our issue. That was a town issue. So addition, you know, so I'd just like to say, you know, we're not happy with the end result, but we can, we can live with it, as long as they were, are willing to indemnify us. You know, that's still a concern. I understand it's a civil matter, so I don't know how we address that. But since I own that road, that 10-foot square, we're concerned. If we're ever sued, because accidents do happen, I can cite the property on the other side of us when they were building, unfortunately, a man was killed when he hit a hot pole. Something happened, there were lawsuits. So I'm sensitive to the fact that these things do happen, unfortunately. Anyway, we would like the open fence. You know, there's, they, I'd just like to comment about what they said, the illegal platform. I don't really want to address that. The platform was there when we bought the house, it was there. I spoke to the owner that lives in Louisiana, it was, it was there when they bought it. So I suspect it's been there since at least the 50s. That being said, as far as the setback that they're referring to, when we move that fence, when we move the fence to its correct location, there won't be, there won't be an issue. Right now, it's, that fence is, I'm sorry, the, the platform that they say is illegal is nine and a half feet from the current fence. When you, if you were to take another look at where the property line is, and if you do your calculations, it's going to be another 11 feet. So we're going to meet the 20-foot setback requirement. It's not an issue. So that being said, you know, you know, we think that the town does have the authority to impose, you know, a deed restriction that we talked about, you know, as far as a view easement, you know, and this has also been done, it's done previously, if you, if you go back and search, it's, it's been done up on Turney Road, and it was done about 30 years ago. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Kane?
What are you appealing? At this point tonight, what are you, I'm hearing resolution on this, and this one we can live with?
Okay. Well, the one item, you know, there were three items. One was, we want it to be indemnified. What I heard is the town can't get involved in that, it's a civil matter, so it has to be addressed somewhere else. We were hoping to, you know, work with the applicant with regard to that and give us an ease, a view easement, which they had originally proposed. So, I don't think they're agreeable to that. And the third thing was the fence. You know, we're still not happy with a solid redwood fence. We don't think there's an issue with privacy, and the reason I say that, if you look at their plan again, everything faces down the hill. We're the ones looking down. So we look down from our yard into the air yard.
So if that's the nature of your appeal, you want us to do what?
Okay. One, I want to, you know, is the fence issue, which I think is, I think that, that fence, if you will, doesn't comply to the Hillside Guideline.
All right. Let's, let's talk about that for a moment.
Okay.
The Guidelines want open fencing, and I think if this was a four-sided development, they're going to do open fencing on three sides, and the solid fencing on the backside. And the Hillside Guideline says, you know, don't use chain link, don't use solid fences, don't do that. But, if the issue is privacy, you may use a solid fence. So I'd be up against that, I don't know about my fellow commissioners, but I'd be up against that in terms of that aspect of your appeal. What else would you like us to do?
Okay. So, we mentioned the fence, they had, you know, so I think we're back, you know, we're down to the indemnification.
Which is not our... Which is not our-
Which is not, so I have to, you know, approach that, you know, in another manner, I don't know if I have to appeal it to the Town Council, or what, you know, I don't know what the process is, I don't, you know, I don't understand, I'm, we're really nervous about that indemnification, what I don't understand, as I said earlier, is they are required to indemnify the town, so they're willing to do that, I don't understand why they can't indemnify us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you. All right, I'm closing the public portion of this, and I am going to ask a question, a couple of questions of our town attorney, just for clarifications to the commission. My understanding is, as I said, we cannot do anything about the indemnification on the easement for the shared road.
Correct, the rights, responsibilities, duties, maintenance, all of those things are spelled out in the, in the easement, the private easement that the parties have, that could, indemnification might be spelled in that, out in that agreement, if it's not, then that's something that the parties have to work out amongst themselves, and we don't have the ability, you know, natively, to change the terms and conditions-
And neither would the Town Council.
And neither would the Town Council.
Okay, and as far as the view easement?
We don't have anything in our code that allows for the protection of view easements, again, that's a private matter, if there are view easements that's been granted, it was done between two private parties, but not the town implementing that.
Okay, so, I was just, for clarification, so then, then this is becoming, for our discussion point, the fencing, does anyone have any comments, questions, or want to venture a motion?
I'd like to repeat what you said, on the two issues that you talked to council about, if, if appeal rights were exercised, that's, it still would not be the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or does anyone want to venture a motion, Commissioner Hanson?
I'd like, I'd like to move to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Development Review Committee to approve the application, it's Architecture and Site Application S-14-127, and subject to the terms and conditions that were, you know, included with the original approval, and the ones that were added in the recent weeks.
Second, Commissioner Kane?
Question for the maker of the motion, on page six of the staff report, it does talk about existing private water system, is that one of the conditions you'd be including in your motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a second for the motion? I'll second the motion, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Are there any appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights, anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal that decision to the Town Council, forms are available in the clerk's office, the fee must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
All right, we've saved the best for last, it's a new year, and it's time for, huh, that's what I'm saying, it's time to nominate a new chair, and I will be the first to say I would love to nominate our very capable vice chair, Ms. Badami, I think that she has done an exemplary job this year, and will be a wonderful chair. Do I have any, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell, do we have any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Oh, I think, are you the chair now? You can speak.
I don't know, but I'd like to go for it. Can I speak? All right, first of all, I'd like to thank the commissioners for your vote, I'm truly honored, and thank you Chair Birch, for the privilege to serve alongside you this past year, not only did I learn that Chair Birch can run the House, she can build the House, so she did an outstanding job for us as chair, in your leadership and your diplomacy, I can only hope to meet the skill that you did for us. So, in keeping with the practice of allowing newer commissioners the opportunity to lead, I am going to move to nominate Commissioner Kane as vice chair, he brings experience, a wealth of knowledge, and a most eloquent style of speech.
All right, do we have questions, comments, or a second? I'll second the motion, all in favor? Aye, passes unanimously, so we now have a new chair and a new vice chair, congratulations, it's going to be a very wonderful, interesting year.
Yay!
Commissioner Erickson?
So for the record, I would like to thank and congratulate Chair Birch for serving this year, she did it with a great sense of care, concern for the public, and concern for the other members of the commission, and I know that she, from my conversations with her, had some trepidation about serving as chair, and her performance this year proved that her concern and her trepidation were totally unfounded as she stepped into the role, so thank you for your service and the quality of it this year.
Thank you, I really enjoyed it, I've learned a lot, yeah, thank you. All right, so, do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
So the Town Council met on December 15th, they addressed the item, one of the items that was before you tonight, the decoupling and the parking for, to seating for restaurants, they also had the second reading for the Home Occupation Ordinance, and then they appointed commissioners, board members, and committee members, as evidenced by Commissioner Hudes's attendance this evening, that concludes our report.
I would like to point out, you guys all noticed how nicely I moved that parking to Mary's Plate, I don't know if anybody noticed how well that went, but she's going to do great. Do we have any other commission matters? Seeing done, meeting adjourned.